Thank you. Annie, can you unpause the recording?
Oh, sorry about that.
Recording in progress.
Okay, good evening. Welcome to the May 12th Northampton School Committee Student Advisory Council Meeting. I'm Mayor Jean-Louis Shara and I'll be presiding and this meeting is being held remotely on Zoom pursuant to the modifications of the state's open meeting law for the COVID-19 pandemic. And this meeting and all participating on Zoom will be audio and video recorded. I'll begin by asking the clerk to please call the role of the school committee.
Mayor Shara.
Present.
Member Robbins.
Present.
From the UK tonight. Member Gazy.
I'm here.
Member Seraphy Cox.
Present.
Member Stein, I have not seen Member Stein. I don't think he's here yet. Member Levy. Member Levy. Member Miller.
Yes, here.
Member Goldman.
Present.
Member Agna.
Present.
And Member Davis.
Present.
Your Honor, you have a quorum.
Great, thank you. So we have a student union presentation on standards-based grading, so I will be happy to hand the floor over to the student union. Thanks for being here.
Thank you so much. Yeah, so today we're going to be presenting slash discussing standard-based grading and like kind of its implementation at the high school specifically. We don't have a slideshow tonight, so we'll kind of just be talking. Hopefully that's okay. I know it's sometimes helpful to have like a visual like thing to look at, but sorry about that. But yeah, I think Jake's just gonna start by talking about the history and kind of briefly explaining standard-based grading.
Yeah, so standards-based grading at the high school kind of started last year, though it's happened in years prior to individual teachers. But really, when standards-based grading got really introduced to all students in a really big way was the start of this year with the introduction of the new grading platform Otis, which made it easier for teachers to show standards-based grading, which the previous Aspen tool that we're using. So really the start of standards-based grading as like the main instrument that students were being familiar with was, I guess, September of 2021. And that implementation was rocky. A lot of students didn't really know what to, a lot of students and teachers didn't really know what to expect, like maybe they understood it at like a fundamental level, like what it's supposed to be, how, what is it supposed to look like on in theory, but when it actually came down to implementation, there was a lot of confusion from teachers to students. Some teachers to administration that really, it's gotten better, definitely gotten better over the past few months. Over the few months, we've talked with administration, I've gotten information out to students and parents that and teachers, just how exactly it's supposed to work, worked out a lot of kinks that were, you know, just not, they weren't how it was supposed to work, like some students were confused on what a four versus a three would look like on a transcript for being exemplary, three being proficient. And it's, it's taken a lot of time to get students comfortable with the idea. There was initially a lot of opposition. I can say a lot of the opposition can come from upperclassmen, seniors in particular, who are very confused on how colleges would react. And so I guess that's really where all of this is coming from, the fact that students just were confused and frustrated with the system. And so we've, as a student union, have been trying to meet with administration to clarify and try to fix things so that it, standards-based grading is just works better for the next year. And so that's what Lila and Delia will be talking about, what we've been doing and some future steps.
Yeah, so our meetings with the administration, what's mostly come out of it is we've gotten some answers to common like questions that students have about standard-based grading. And we've also been able to give them feedback from the student body. But they are also currently, I think, collecting feedback from faculty. And hopefully that will be like kind of put together soon so that like the student union can see what teachers think about that. And kind of we can all move forward together and kind of make the system work better for students and teachers and administration and everybody involved. But yeah, so there are just a few kind of like common questions and concerns that I'm going to go over that we've heard a lot. And then we might say kind of like some of the answers that the administration gave us when we asked these questions. So one of the most common ones that Jake kind of was talking about was how can I like stand out to colleges with standard-based grade grading? And like, how will colleges like receive like the information that we have a different grading system? So yeah, so pretty much with standard-based grading, many more students, I believe, I don't have the exact numbers, but my impression from our meetings has been that, and from my classes, has been that many more students are getting threes and fours, which if you convert that to the old scale of like letter grades and number grades, that's like 95s and hundreds pretty much. Though we've, we're, we have been told that like the system is moving away from letter and number grades, so that might not be relevant, but a lot of people are still thinking in terms of As and Bs and Cs and like 190 and 80, and it's very hard to make the transition away from thinking about grades in that way. So we kind of have a conversion table, which we can maybe show you if that would be helpful. But yeah, so, but I believe many more students are getting threes and fours, which are proficient and exemplaries. And if you can convert that back to the old scale, that would be an A. And some students are concerned that this will make it so that they can't stand out like to colleges because I guess grade inflation. So pretty much the answer we got about that was that it may make students like, I guess, rely more on letters of recommendation and extracurriculars and stuff like that, though that was the response, I believe, of just one school that the administration has talked to. The administration has been talking to a few local colleges about like how they would react to seeing SPG on a transcript. So that's not like a definitive answer. But it is, yeah, so pretty much this question is a little bit unanswered still about like, will I seem like I'm working the same amount of somebody who may be working less hard than me? But like, we're still getting the same grade because now more people are getting the same high grades? Yeah, so that's, that's a pretty tricky one. And that's kind of goes hand in hand with the fact that a three with, which is a proficient, if you convert that back to like the old scale again, that would be anywhere from a 75 to a 95. So when teachers are grading things, they have to choose proficient, exemplary, developing, or beginning, or missing. And so they, but a lot of, or some teachers that I've heard have said that a three being like a 75 to a 95 on the old scale is too broad of a range. So people that would be getting Cs in the old system are now getting like As in the old system. Yes, it's very complicated. But yeah, so that's, that is a complaint that we've heard a bit from both students and teachers. Yeah. And then another thing is that with standard-based grading, and this doesn't necessarily have to do with like the proficiency scale, but students can now reassess within a two-week period if they didn't get like an ideal grade the first time they assessed the standard. And, but at least in my classes, that two-week period is just kind of unlimited reassessments. So some people have said that this is like less motivating. And you can kind of procrastinate until like whenever, when like, I guess, when grades are due or when the two-week period is ended. It makes them pay less attention in class. This is my personal experience. It makes me pay less attention in class because I know that if I screw up the first time, I'll just do it again the second or third time and I can get the same grade. And another concern people have with this is if it's preparing people for college, where you generally can't reassess on like finals or any assessment. But on the other hand, standard-based grading only grades assessments similar to college where you're not necessarily being graded on like reading your book every night, but you're being graded on like a final paper. So yeah, those are kind of pros and cons, but there is kind of, in my perspective, an equity issue with this because students that are able to take Smith College courses or HUC or GCC or Westwood State will get that college experience, but students that may not be able to do that are just at NHS with standard-based grading, which is maybe not preparing students for the rigor of a college environment. So that is another issue that we've brought up to the administration and are currently working on. Yeah. And then I guess the last thing is that with standard-based grading, something called Howls has been kind of put into place, habits of work and learning, I believe. And Howls are kind of like participation grades, like are you being a friendly student? Like, are you doing your work when you're asked? But the thing about these is that they're not part of the final grade, like maybe in the past you would get a participation grade for like a discussion or something like that. And apparently you're not supposed to be able to reassess if you don't have like good Howls. But I have not seen that being implemented. So I think that's another thing that like if we work on the implementation, it's a really good idea because then students have to participate in order to be able to reassess. And that might like fix the kind of procrastinating issue. But yeah, so generally the feedback that I've heard and from what I've experienced is standard-based grading has caused students to kind of pay less attention and work less hard in the moment and which often leads to procrastinating and being behind. Yeah. So I guess Dolly's going to talk a little bit more about like our conclusions about this and what we're going to do, be doing moving forward.
Thanks, Ella. So I'm going to talk about some specific conclusions and specific ideas we have and then just generally the main things we've noticed about how this has changed the school, which Lila touched a little bit on. So first of all, one important thing is that the grading guidelines are set by each department. So within the entire school, each teacher grades a little bit differently, but it's supposed to be pretty consistent and standardized by department. We've noticed and other students have noticed that within department, there are still some inconsistencies. And those inconsistencies are in like what quality of work determines what grade, along with like whether there are barriers to reassessing, like having Howls or demonstrating a bit more understanding before you take another shot at reassessing. Just those are some of the inconsistencies. And the idea that we had and we've been talking about with the school administrators is having departments kind of like either release their guidelines to students or publicly explain, like host a forum for students to explain how the work is going to be graded in the department. And just kind of provide this forum for student questions and conversations around standard-based grading on a smaller scale. So there have been standard-based grading flex blocks hosted by school administrators from the entire school. But I think it'd probably be more personable and more helpful for students and also probably more students would go if they were held by departments. Okay, next. Generally, pretty much anyone you will talk to in the school will be like, yeah, standard-based grading, the concept of it is good, it seems equitable, I think it's a really good idea. But when actually implemented, as Lila touched on, it does lead to really good grades, but also probably grade inflation. And those two things, grade inflation or good grades is kind of more emphasized than the level of understanding that should be higher with standard-based grading. And we've heard from just like some research that the school has provided that standard-based grading is actually supposed to limit grade inflation. But I think the opposite perhaps is happening, which means that like grade inflation is still a very real problem and that standard-based grading hasn't fixed it. Maybe it's at the same level or maybe it's exacerbated. There's really no way of telling. Overall, in terms of the school culture, Lila talked about this a bit, there's definitely a really big shift towards placing more emphasis on the tests and the reassessments, the the summative assignments, as they're called. And we've moved away from active learning and there's a big drop in engagement on like a daily basis. Because probably there is no busy work, which, you know, might be a good thing or bad thing, but definitely students are less engaged and less, they see less need to focus in the moment because you can reassess it again and it's easy to reassess it. So in terms of what we're doing next, this is not a done issue. You're probably going to be hearing about this more. The administration is continually assessing how standard-based grading is working, talking with students, faculty. And then we're working with them on it. So we're going to keep talking with them, talking with students and brainstorming ideas about how to kind of like bridge the gap between how standard-based grading should be working, how we all think that it could, and where we are now, which is not ideal.
Also, if I could just add, we, I do want to like acknowledge that the point of standard-based grading is to de-emphasize like numerical grades and emphasize proficiency. And I, I think that's a great idea and it doesn't really make sense for people to be graded on like a number. It makes sense to like measure their understanding so that students don't have to do busy work if they already understand something. And students that don't understand something can do more practice. But I think kind of what Dolly was saying is that it's not kind of working out that way at the moment. And so we want to work towards making like proficiency a reality and less of like this kind of idea that we're holding on to and also holding on to like numerical grades. It's just, it's a very hard transition, I think, for people to understand that it's no longer about ABCs and Ds and stuff like that. It's about what's your understanding, both like students and teachers.
Yeah. Also, I forgot a really important part, just like skip right over it. One like really specific thing that we've heard from teachers and students, but mostly teachers, when they're looking over the work and trying to give it a grade is that, you know, we have those options, one, two, three, four, and they're feeling that like it's too little, like the gaps between all the numbers are a little bit too big. And then they're having to choose like a two or a three for work that might be in the middle. And so we brought that up with school administrators and they really heard that and are taking that into consideration, thinking about maybe adding like half steps, like 2.5, 3.5, or expanding the scales, it's like above four. That's just something that probably is going to be changing.
Okay. Thank you, Delia, Lila, and Jake. Any questions or comments from the school committee? Holly, I'm sorry, member Gazy.
Um, I'd like to know how many other local school districts use, use standard-based grading? And Dr. Provost, maybe you can help me out here. What, what was what was the, what was the driving factors? I mean, and because I want to know how colleges are reacting and which colleges you've contacted about their reaction to standard-based grading?
So I, I can't answer the question about how many other local schools are using standard-based grading. I can't talk to the driving force behind it though, which goes back to the last district improvement plan in which the goal was to explore standard-based grading across the district. The district formed a team that involved educators from all levels and all different subject areas within the district and worked on understanding standard-based grading and different options for implementing standard-based grading because there's certainly many different ways to do it. Over the course of, let's say, the last three years of that district improvement plan. And the rationale for that, what was exactly what the students had described, that there were issues with grade inflation with numerical system, there were issues around equity, there were concerns about grading a student on a one, you know, sort of a one-chance shot without any opportunity for for them to improve themselves. And more than that, I would say sort of the overall concern was what Lilo is talking about in embedding work habits as a part of the grade because that had a lot of concerns around equity. You know, students don't have similar levels of support to do some of those things that sometimes get embedded in a work habits grade. And so really just focusing on whether the student has the competency or not, not whether the student has all the rest of these trappings that go with, you know, the idea of a good student. While we were in the context of that, we did reach out to local colleges and schools to talk about how standard-based grading transcript would look. The feedback we got at the time was that it would not be a detriment to students. As you know, a lot of colleges at the time were moving away from forms of standards-based, I'm saying not standards-based, but forms of standardized assessments like SATs and other ways of judging student performance because really what they were looking for were not students who could do well on a test, which they found predicted really how well they did for the first semester, but not whether they were going to be successful in college per se, but how well-rounded they were. Which I think gets to the comment that one of the students talked about that admissions offices would be looking more at things like, is it a well-rounded student? Does the student have extracurricular activities? How do they participate with their community? And other factors that are becoming more important in college admissions now. And then, just to finish the story, then when this, this current district improvement plan was written, the team working on it had to face a decision about whether or not to make standards-based grading part of the plan. You know, we had spent time studying it, but now did we actually want to implement it? So we debated that for about a year and then ended up in the final version of the current district improvement plan saying, yes, we need to move forward and give it a try and see how it works. So that's, that's why, that's how we got to the place where we are right now for implementation.
Yeah, I, I think that, I mean, the elementary schools have been using that type of grading even back when I was doing it. But there do seem to be a lot of tricky aspects making that change at the high school level especially. And I want to thank the students for bringing all these concerns and I'm glad to hear that you are working with administration to try to figure out how to, this all works together.
Lila, is there something you wanted to share?
Yeah, thank you. I was just, I wanted to add on to one of the things Dr. Provost said, which is that one of my concerns actually about standard-based grading is that colleges would be focusing more on extracurriculars specifically because many students aren't able to do like extracurricular activities and maybe have to like go to work or take care of their younger siblings. And so I kind of see that as an equity issue. And that's also something, that's an issue just with the college admissions process and not necessarily our fault, doesn't like our grading system's fault, but I am concerned that if colleges are focusing less on grades, which is something that every student has, they'll be focusing on like things that only certain students have access to, I guess.
Thank you. Member Davis.
Thank you. I guess I wanted to put out that I see, I really thank you for, for the clear way that you broke up what the issues are and that you spoke about it and that you're, you have ideas about how to solve the problem. I do see that at the high school level, it's more complex perhaps than at the elementary school that I have from experience with. I think something that really jumped out with me that my understanding of standard-based grading is problematic is this idea of a conversion scale. It's like, because it's so hard, even after years of using standard-based grading myself, people are used to the ABC, people are used to the 90 to 100 thing. And my understanding of it is that it really is two different things. It's a different way of looking at what was learned and and that I see that as confusing to the teachers, to the students, to very understandably make a valiant attempt at, to understand it by saying, well, this is sort of like an A, this will be sort of like a B because it's really, just a minute, did you learn that chunk of stuff? Do you understand it? So I would like to think that colleges are familiar with this, like Northampton isn't the only school in the United States that's doing it, but it, I definitely would be reassured if I were a student applying to colleges that, that it's understood what, what you've gone through and how you've demonstrated what you know. But thank you very much for presenting this to us.
Member Agna.
Hi, I'd like to echo my colleagues in saying that I really appreciate this presentation. And I'm also not as familiar, I think, with all of the aspects of standards-based grading as I should be. But I, I did serve on that team just before I retired and we did a lot of work in the elementary schools for this. The challenges at the high school clearly are, are different. Might have one just sort of question or comment that what you said, Lila, about the fact that sometimes there's a grade or a number given to a student that might be the same as to another student and the level of work might not be the same. So that's confusing, I can imagine, to you and to others doing the work. My question or wondering is it allowing teachers to give a grade or a number to a student determining that's the, the level that they know that student can achieve that might be different from the other student who might have to get to the four by doing more work. And so it allows the, the teacher to measure individually what they see as the, the ability for those students to achieve to that level. Does that make sense of what I'm talking about, Lila?
I think so. Are you asking, like, is the idea that teachers kind of differentiate their grading?
That's what I'm asking, yes.
Okay. My impression is that that's not what is going on and that's not what the administration, I could be wrong about this, but I don't think that's what the administration is trying to get teachers to do. Yeah. Does that answer your question?
It does. And I'll, I'll probably try to think more about it. I know we have a little bit of a time challenge right here too. So, but thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you. Member Robbins.
Thank you. And thank you, Jake and Lila and Dahlia. I'm going to ask a question about the PALS part of it. So my understanding is that homework is no longer included as part of student assessment. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, so, given that and given what I really heard, which is concerning for me, is your observation from students that there's a lack of engagement in the classroom. And for us, that's a huge part of our mission is to have engaged students in the classroom. And I'm really wondering how the habits of work and learning either contribute or distract from that and how teachers deal with that. And it sounds like that's a whole nother conversation, which I'm hoping we can have in the curriculum subcommittee, because it's, I think it's one the community has a lot of questions about as well. But my own thoughts about it are, if we are holding kids to a level of being able to show what they know by a summative assessment, and that's what the focus is, how are we teaching students to get to that point? And that may very well be something that we simply don't know enough about what's happening in individual classrooms or across the school. But it does sound like it's a really worthy conversation, which I hope we can have very soon. And I really appreciate your being able to talk to both administration and students about this. And I hope we can continue on having that collaborative discussion in the future about it.
Thank you, Member Robbins. Member Seraphie Cox.
Yeah, thank you. Obviously, this conversation is primarily about the high school and we've, some of my colleagues have brought up the implementation of this grading system at the elementary school, which as an elementary school parent, I have experienced. So I'm curious if maybe Dr. Provost can, or and I guess mostly just Dr. Provost, could speak to how the implementation is going at the middle school.
We are behind at the middle school. The elementary school, as Member Agna said, had its standards-based grading going back for a long, long time, probably more than a decade. For them, it was just a process of changing the, really changing the descriptors, because the descriptors had gotten to be quite out of date. The high school went forward with implementation before the middle school, because I think a lot of that had to do with the change in administration. So at the time when this was all starting, it was also Principal Caldwell's first year getting to know staff. And then, of course, there was COVID. So middle school is in a preparation mode, but hasn't actually started to implement standards-based at this time.
Okay. And so I, I think that this conversation, I guess I would that this conversation could be useful for the, the middle school to, you know, have learnings from implementation at the high school.
Agreed.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'm going to thank you again for joining us. And, oh, sorry, we're not, it's, we're, this is just questions from the school committee. We haven't gotten to public comment yet. So if there are no further questions, is there a motion to adjourn out of this part of the meeting? And the Student Advisory Council part of the meeting, and then we will enter the full school committee meeting.
Motion to adjourn the Student Advisory Council meeting.
Thank you.
I second it.
That's been made and seconded. A roll call, please. Annie?
Member Robbins.
Yes.
Member Gazy.
Yes.
Member Seraphie Cox.
Yes.
Member Stein.
Yes.
Member Levy, has she joined us?
I, yes. Sorry for my tardiness.
Member Miller.
Yes.
Member Goldman.
Yes.
Member Agna.
Yes.
Member Davis.
Yes.
And Mayor Shara.
Yes. Okay, thank you. We have adjourned out of the Student Advisory Council meeting and we are now going to enter into the, the full Northampton School Committee meeting. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. So, good evening. Welcome to the May 12th Northampton School Committee meeting. I'm Mayor Jean-Louis Shara, the Chair of the School Committee, and I'll be presiding. This meeting is being held remotely on Zoom pursuant to the modification of the state's open meeting law for COVID, for the pandemic. And this meeting and all participating on Zoom will be audio and video recorded. We, we took the role already, so we can move on to our next agenda item, which is public comment. If you wish to make a comment, please use the raised hand feature in the bottom menu bar under reactions. If you're calling in by phone, you can raise your hand by hitting star nine. Before you begin, please state your name and your city or town for the public record. I'll set a three-minute timer to ensure everyone has an equal, equal opportunity to speak. And I ask that all but the school committee turn off your video until called upon, because only the person recognized has the floor. So we will start with, I can't see full names, Emily Body, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thanks. I am Emily Body. I'm a resident and parent in Northampton. And I'm also a co-founder of Mask Choice Pioneer Valley. Thanks for listening to me tonight. I understand that DUCY's current guidance says that districts seeing rapid increases in COVID-19 cases should, quote, "work with DUCY, Local Board of Health, and DPH epidemiologists to review and assess the most recent testing results, discuss strategies to control the spread, and determine additional measures to be taken," unquote. I get that. But these measures need to be lawful. Sure, districts can say there is a mandate and require certain types of masks over others. However, they have no legal authority to enforce said mask requirement. As we know from the publicly available MOU dated 3/31/22 out of Leverett Elementary School pertaining to the same matter, enforceability of mask mandates that are issued in the absence of state and federal mandates, quote, "exclusion of students is currently not permissible under law. Board of Education and/or state, federal government has sole authority to implement exclusion of students as a consequence of failure to wear masks pursuant to a mandate," unquote. I posed the following question in an email to Dr. Provost, at-large member Gwen Agna, and my own member Meg Robbins, and I did not receive a response. I realize that you will not answer me as a participant in public comment, but I will ask the question anyway for all to hear. Please, will you explain how NPS assumes power to remove a student for not wearing a mask, as happened Wednesday to at least two students in the district, while Leverett has determined this is not lawful? Where is the end game here? Perpetual masking of children whenever you feel like it and unlawfully? We have ample data from the past two years that school mask mandates are not effective. Masking children causes harm. Our children deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is Patrick.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
My computer seems to be having some issue with my video and it's not working, so I'm just going to speak. All these. Good evening, members of the school committee, mayor, superintendent Provost, and everybody else listening. My name is Patrick Bowen. I'm a parent of the Easthampton School student. And I'm also speaking as a member of Mask Choice Pioneer Valley. The Northampton School seems to have chosen to embur themselves in this controversy again and divide our community and our student body by re-implementing a mask mandate. An outdated measure that an assessment of across-the-board scientific, scientific data shows is ineffective. And if you look at our nearby communities that has, have recently made changes to their mask policy, it's mask recommendations at this point and not mandated masks because of the legal measure just outlined by the, sorry. The reason that they're not mandated is because they're not allowed to do that under state law. It's because if you go to enforce it as last comment, towards describing you violated state law by withholding education from students. So when Easthampton, Emerson, Leverett, who are previously peer cities and falling on this level of COVID intensity, they are no longer, now Northampton is alone in trying to do this policy. Additionally, when you don't have an, an exception process, you're violating the Federal Americans with Disability Act, or ADA, that requires such an exemption process to be in place for any sort of mandate on these lines. So now this, Northampton is violating state and federal law. This is on top of the committee's frequent violation of open meeting law. While I've only filed one complaint so far, there have been many other such violations. I know that some members of this committee and committee have adopted a zero, a tribal zero on masking and make false claims of information against accurate data at odds with the position. Masks work, but mask mandates don't, and especially mask mandates after two years. If you feel that was previously part of a vocal minority, you can see that's no longer true if you looked around the schools during the past few weeks when the mandate wasn't in place. If there are support for a position, there would have been nearly no change in masking. Instead, there's a dramatic change. CDC publicly available data shows there's no, to no difference in virus transmission in communities working without mask mandates. And that over 75% of children in the US already have had COVID. We do have abundant data showing immense learning loss, widespread mental health issues, increased disorders, and other anxiety-induced maladies in young girls. The virus is real, but we have a lot of tools to mitigate its effect, namely vaccinations and antiviral drugs. The virus impacts a small group at any given time, whereas restrictions impact everyone the whole time they're in effect. I know that many members on this committee don't have basic, the basic info to make these choices. Member Robbins at a recent meeting referred to Director O'Leary as Dr. O'Leary, but she is neither a doctor nor has a master's in public health. She is a registered sanitarian. And unlike a master's in public health, which teaches a holistic view of health and it's wearing contingent risks versus happiness connection to mental health, the training of registered sanitarians to focus on control of environmental health, in other words, a sole purpose in stopping disease. I feel that this tunnel vision approach to health clearly is showing in Northampton's ongoing incorrect choice of mandates. I ask that Northampton join the current accepted understanding of science on COVID and stop violating state and federal law. All efforts should be focused on getting people boosted, making the public aware of antivials and undoing the damage we've done to parts of health and education over the past few years. Northampton should switch fast back to mass recommended amounts optional immediately. And it should move itself out of legal jeopardy or for immense speed and never put our children in this position again. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next is Jeff DiPolitano.
Hi, my name is Jeff DiPolitano. I live in Northampton. I have a kid in NHS and JFK. And I'd like to state my appreciation that masking was re-implemented in the schools. And I won't go into it, but we totally have peer-reviewed studies, scientific studies that demonstrate that masking prevents transmission of airborne viruses, which I'm sure you all know. I work at UMass, where just today, as thousands of students were leaving the university to return to their communities, the school announced a test positivity rate of nearly 10%. And in just in my small department of less than a dozen people, two staff members and their families have been infected and are both convalescing at home. I know folks who have lost family members to COVID, and I know folks who are dealing with long COVID. I imagine unfortunately that many people here do as well. I know that there is little institutional support in the state or nationally to mitigate, never mind acknowledge that we do not yet have control over COVID-19. I know that there are severely misled people who think that masks are worse than disease that's killed over a million people in this country as of today. I understand that means that the decision about the safety of literally the air that our children breathe sitting in classes for hours and hours is in your hands. I'm not asking you to maintain masking because our kids have immunocompromised family at home or maybe immunocompromised themselves. I'm not asking you to maintain masking because our kids may have siblings under the age of five unable to be vaccinated. I'm not asking you to debate the chances of getting some of the deleterious effects on the vascular, neurological, pulmonary, and other bodily systems of COVID, or that we don't know the long-term effects of infection over and over again. I am asking you to imagine that if this wasn't COVID-19, imagine if we had rampant measles or whooping cough in our school. Please treat COVID-19 like any other infectious disease and maintain masking, because it's simply one of the easiest and most effective things we can do to control a virus. This shouldn't be hard. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Breann Schwartz.
Hello, my name is Breann Schwartz. I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm a speech therapist and I have a private practice in Northampton. I also have a kindergartner at Ryan Road. A little more about myself, I have been working with children and families for over 15 years. And I'm a longstanding member of the American Speech Language Hearing Association. And I have a master's degree in speech pathology from Columbia University. And I'm here again to implore the committee to consider the educational repercussions of masking for our children. And I speak both as an educator and as a parent. I believe I can offer information as a speech therapist that must be considered deeply when we make these decisions. And think about what are we truly asking of our children when we ask them to put on a mask? Wearing a mask removes many visual cues that we get from the speaker. Masks attenuate sound by three to 12 decibels and also result in low-pass filtering of high-frequency sounds. This can make it more difficult to understand speech and some higher-pitched voices. Who has higher-pitched voices? Kids, especially young children. Masks hide many non-verbal cues, such as smiling. Who are the ones that are learning how to socialize, play, respond to others? Again, those are our kids. Our kids simply cannot communicate well or learn to communicate well while wearing masks. As adults, we have years of pre-pandemic life to draw upon to make conclusions about what, what others have said, how they are feeling, how we should act. I have a six-year-old and a three-year-old who are living in a masked world. How can this not impact them? Kids learn essentially everything through communication. And when communication is blocked in some way, so is learning and social development. Mask-wearing has gone on for so long that it has become a hindrance at best and an imposed learning disability at its worst. My students with communication delays face some of the biggest risks. I receive multiple calls every week from concerned parents. Communication problems are growing and so is my waitlist. Last week, I spoke to two separate parents on the same day calling me saying that their three-year-olds are not speaking yet. As we navigate these developments, we must admit that anytime a child wears a mask, there is a consequence, an educational, social, emotional, developmental consequence. And I ask now, what long-term outcomes are we willing to face for our kids when we cover their faces? Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Otis Rogers-Brightwood.
Hi, sorry. That's my school Zoom. I'm a, an educator in Springfield Public Schools. And before I logged in, I forgot to remove Brightwood. Anyways, hi. I'm Otis Rogers. I live in, I live in Florence and I have a, a child who goes to Leeds Elementary School. And first of all, I just want to thank the school committee very much for reinstating the mask mandate. I think it's a wise choice, considering that we are currently dealing with a virus that is about as contagious as measles, which means that it's an airborne disease that will fill a room. And it doesn't take very much for us to be, for students to be spreading this from one person to another. We've talked a lot about how maybe there's no exceptions for some students who need to have no mask. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't remember hearing about something that there's no exceptions for certain students when there's a disability. I know that where I work, that some students are, have always been allowed to not wear a mask if that's, you know, a serious issue. I also want to say that people talk about serious consequences of wearing masks. I know that there are, I mean, I believe what you're saying about, you know, masks having long-term consequences for children. for children and their emotional well-being. It is hard to wear a mask, but I also want you to take into account that another long-term consequence could be the death of a loved one, perhaps a parent, someone who may be immunocompromised at home. And I also just want to point out one more thing, that we don't have to wear masks just about anywhere we, anywhere in the world right now. But we have no choice but to send our children to school. There is no virtual option. That's all I have to say. Thanks again.
Next is Emmy.
Hi, everybody. Happy Spring. My name's Emmy Stammel. I'm the mother of a fourth grader who adored her years at JSS, Jackson Street. So I'm here tonight to advocate for her and others like her by addressing the reinstatement of the mask mandate. My daughter has significant hearing loss. She relies on lip reading, facial expression, and clear speech to understand her peers and teachers, which means she needs everyone around her to be mask-free. For hard-of-hearing kids, things that hearing people take for granted are very challenging, as you might imagine, like social pragmatics, correctly hearing, and then processing spoken language, and things like inference. So when people wear face masks, the decibel level is lowered significantly, and lip reading and facial expression, which are imperative to inferring meaning, are eliminated. So let's just be really clear that a masking mandate for children at school means that as a community, we have decided that the perceived benefits of this intervention justify denying children, like my daughter, their federally mandated right to a fair and appropriate education. That we are okay with breaking that law. I respect this community of educators so much, and I have to believe that we're not okay with denying equity. There needs to be nuance in the conversation about blanket mandates like this because harm is being done. I'm heartbroken every day sending my kid to a sea of masked faces. For example, if we're going to defer to health regulatory boards when determining school policies, don't we have to demand that they're weighing the deleterious impacts these interventions are having on many children's mental, social, and emotional health? Thank you for listening and hopefully really hearing this side of the equation.
Thank you, Emmy. Next is Adrian Staub.
Thank you. It's hard to follow that very moving statement. Here we are again, and at this point, it seems futile to recite the same litany that there's simply no compelling evidence that school mask mandates reduce the spread of COVID-19 here or anywhere else, that essentially all the so-called cases of COVID that we are identifying in the schools are asymptomatic or extremely mild, that masking of children is harmful to their education, their social development, their language development, their mental health, that we are imposing masking first on those who are least affected by COVID and who are most harmed by wearing masks, that anyone who wants to wear a mask is, of course, free to do so, that COVID-19 will be circulating in the community forever, et cetera. It seems futile to recite this litany because, two years in, it is clear that it is largely people's political and cultural identities that determine what they believe, that faith in mandatory school masking as an effective intervention and faith that it is not harming children are not based on facts. These faiths may persist because of their signaling power or because it is very hard to come to grips with having been wrong and for these mistakes to have had such profound consequences for our children. So instead of talking about these facts yet again, I'll simply make a practical point. If North Hampton becomes the school district that keeps mandating masks on kids when other districts aren't, people will start to leave. They will put their kids in private school if they can. They will move away, or they will simply not move here. The last speaker made this abundantly clear. More and more people are recognizing that this policy is both futile and damaging, even if the authorities in North Hampton are not recognizing this. North Hampton is known for a lot of good things, including tolerance, a vibrant art scene, and a beautiful natural setting. But if this continues, it will rapidly become known for something else, something very bad.
Thank you. Next is Mindy Haskins Rogers.
Hi, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm Mindy Haskins Rogers. I live in Florence. I have a child at Leeds. I'm grateful that you've reintroduced the mask mandate. We are a high-risk family, and I agree that there has to be nuance in this conversation because in the first 10 days after Leeds went mask optional, we had 19 cases in the school. And my child's classroom has been, everybody in the classroom is considered a close contact now if one child has COVID because they are unmasked. My child isn't. And most, actually, I'm understanding that most of the kids in the class are still wearing masks by choice. However, because some of them are unmasked and those are the kids getting COVID, everybody's a close contact, which means that for several weeks since you've gone mask optional, my partner and I are masking at home because our child's a close contact, and we want them to be able to be unmasked. We have to eat separately from our child. I mean, talk about emotional impact. We have to wear masks whenever we are in close proximity to our child or trying to cuddle our child. It is horrible, horrible for us. And we do it because we think that it's important that our families stay healthy, and this is an airborne virus. Now, I appreciate the anecdotal evidence of more kids coming for speech therapy, but, you know, there's been a lot of study about the impact of masks. There's been a lot of concern about it. And the comparison that's always made is that visually impaired children develop speech and language ability at exactly the same rate as children who are not visually impaired. There's been no evidence that actually masks are contributing to language delays. And I did also forward a study a while ago to the to the board, the Arkansas School Districts that studied 200 schools with varying levels of mask mandates and found that when they corrected for some of the errors in the early studies that showed no effect of mask mandates, there actually was a 23% reduction in transmission in schools that had full mask mandates. We know this is an airborne virus. This is, I mean, we knew logically, based on what, everything we've learned about the virus in the last two years, that as soon as students took off their masks, they would start spreading this virus. Absolutely no health authorities have declared this endemic yet. It is still a very deadly disease. It is still unpredictable, and we are still enduring these waves. We're not there yet. I hope we'll get there soon, for my family's sake too, and for the sake of all the families who are struggling with the masking. Again, having worked in the district, I know that there are accommodations for students who need them. There is not some kind of maniacal oppression of children who have conditions or different abilities that require them to take off their masks or make it difficult for them to tolerate masks. There have always been accommodations, and I think there's a lot of compassion in our schools. So I am grateful that you've reintroduced it until May 20th. I would urge you, please, to keep it until the end of the semester. Again, if this were, if it were scientifically proven that masks are not helpful, then your doctors' offices would be unmasked, your hospitals would be unmasked, the medical professionals would be taking off their masks and seeing patients without masks. They're not because they know that that protects us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ronnie Gold.
Hi, my name is Ronnie Gold. I have two daughters at Bridge Street School. And I'm here to speak tonight to ask that the decision around what should happen in schools regarding COVID safety should be solely made by the Health Director and the Health Department. As the community's confidence in the school committee, the Shack and the superintendent's decisions have unfortunately been tainted due to the numerous changes in the decision-making process. I hope the school committee, mayor, superintendent, and health director find a way to move our school's COVID safety measures to the sole authority of the Health Department so our community can have confidence in how we will navigate COVID moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I don't see any other hands. Let's take a quick look. Right, seeing no further hands for public comment, we will move on with the agenda. Thank you, everyone who came to speak this evening. And next up, do we have any announcements from school committee members? I can't, hold on, I'm having a hard time seeing all of you, so let me... Oh, sorry, Member Agna.
Thank you. As the school committee vice chair, I would like to make a statement for the record in the short period of time that many of us have been members of this body. We have faced several difficult issues, some of which are ongoing. None of us anticipated this would be an easy job, and I, for one, am still very happy and honored to have it. I speak now to thank my school committee colleagues, the North Hampton educators, the students and families who've been very supportive and respectful, even in disagreements. These moments are models for how a democratic, with a small d, community can and should operate. I am concerned that there have been also moments between us on the committee, between us and educators, and between us and students and families that have been less than respectful and have caused hurt for some and anger for others. This all saddens me greatly, but it doesn't surprise me, given the tenor of public discourse these days. As we move past one of the most contentious periods in the history of the school committee, I propose that my colleagues and I come together at a retreat to develop a clear mission statement for our work and norms for our meetings and our relationships. This process should be guided and facilitated by a professional. I will send out possible dates for this retreat as your vice chair. And as far as a process for healing for our whole community of stakeholders and citizens, I know that this will require time and a collective effort to make it happen. I volunteer for this effort. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Member Agna. Are there other announcements from school committee members? Oh, Member Levy? Oh. Hold on, did you lose your co-hosting?
I think I didn't. I think I was never given co-hosting abilities.
Can you please do that? Thanks.
Thanks, Member Agna. I'm really excited for us to come together in a retreat. I just want to propose, given the direction we're moving as a district towards restorative practices and the incredible opportunity that method brings for healing, norm-building, and coming up with agreements moving forward, that we, that our retreat be facilitated by somebody who is a restorative practices practitioner and that that be the method that we pursue. I'd be happy to talk to you more offline about folks in the area who could help us with that.
Thank you, Member Levy. Member Goldman.
Thank you. Member Seraphie Cox, is your comment related to the retreat? Okay, I just wanted to provide the committee with an update that I attended the Ad Hoc Start Time Subcommittee that was comprised of individuals from the Amherst Pelham School District and our own district to continue to evaluate and consider the effect of start time on our community. And we're putting together a survey, and we'll meet again soon to continue working on that effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Goldman. Member Seraphie Cox.
I just wanted to make an announcement about the Budger Community Board at the Bridge Street School. There is going to be an event this weekend to dedicate the community board. Of course, the Bridge Street School sign went in last year. Time has so little meaning now. And the community board came a little later. Many, many thanks to the Word Three Neighborhood Association and a former school committee member, Ronnie Gold, for incredible leadership for making these things a reality. The Budger Community Board honors the legacy of Jerry Budger, a great friend to Bridge Street School and a longtime Word Three member. So the Budger Board Celebration is happening on Sunday, the 15th, at 4:00 PM in Lampren Park, which is right next to Bridge Street School. And there will be music and festivities, and I think some light refreshments. And I hope that you all can join.
Thank you so much, Member Seraphie Cox. Member Stein.
Yeah, I just wanted to quickly just express my solidarity and support for all of the trans and non-gender conforming members of our community, our staff, our faculty, and yeah, I just, I want them to feel supported by us, and I'm hoping that they will call on us for help and support as needed. Thank you.
Thank you for that member's time. Member Davis.
Hi, I just wanted to quickly make sure that if you get a chance to swing by North Hampton High School and see the beautiful mural that is, I'm not quite sure if it's totally done, but in process. And it's, it was involvement with students and the teachers, and it's a wonderful community and student effort, and it's beautiful.
Thank you for that. Any other announcements? There was a request from Member Goldman for an update or to sort of understand the budget process from here out. So the budget, sort of go through the rest of the budget schedule. The budget will be submitted to the City Council on this coming Monday, which is the 16th. And then I will present the budget message, which is the, sort of the front of the budget, gets read at City Council, and that will be a week from today, so that's Thursday, the 19th. And then the City Council holds budget hearings and will take a vote potentially on June 2nd. So that is the update on that. Any other updates or announcements? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to recommended actions. We have approval of minutes from school committee meeting, March 10th, and the special school committee meeting on March 17th, and an acceptance of donations from North Hampton Musical Booster Club donation of $12,385. Is there a motion?
Sorry, Mayor. I did send down a message that the March 17th minutes are not finished yet.
Oh, apologies. Okay, so we're moving the March 17th, so this is just the minutes from March 10th and the donation, the Musical Booster Club donation.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Member Levy. Roll call, please. Annie, thank you.
Member Gazy. Member Gazy.
Let's see, Member Gazy. Oh, hold on. Looks like Member Gazy needs to be made a co-host again, perhaps?
Okay. We find her.
Can you unmute?
There she is.
Yeah, there you go.
There I am now. Thank you. Yes.
Member Seraphie Cox.
Yes, and afterwards, if we could just have a one sentence about what the donation was from the Northampton Musical Booster Club, that would be great.
Member Stein.
Yes.
Member Levy.
Yes.
Member Miller.
Yes.
Member Goldman.
Yes.
Member Agna.
Yes.
Member Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Shara.
Yes.
And member Robbins.
Yes.
Nick, are you here to give one sentence on the donation?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
The donation funds the the stipends for the folks that worked on the musical production. Apparently, that's traditionally how those stipends have been funded. Each year, they make a donation to cover the eight different positions that are involved in in producing the musical. So that's what that was for.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, moving on, unless there's objection, we have a few presentations tonight and people who are joining us, plus we have people who are here for certain items, members of the public who are here for certain items. So unless there's an objection from the committee, I would like to rearrange the schedule a little bit. I'm wondering if I could skip over for now reports and recommendations and move on to some new business items. I don't see an objection. Okay, can we start with the student representative report? Lila, if you are here, I think you are. There you are. Are you are you available to do that now, Lila? And then you can move on, leaving.
That sounds good. Okay, thanks. All right, I just, I guess I have a quick update about what the student union's been up to in the past few weeks. Yeah, so the first thing is that our elections are coming up soon for next year's, who will be next year's representatives? And we recently instituted ranked choice voting for our elections. So we'll have ranked choice voting for all of the student representatives on student union. So we're very excited about that. Hopefully, we're able to do that with the rest of the school and that works out. So, but yeah, everybody's super psyched about that. And then another thing is that a math teacher reached out to us to talk to us about how to kind of have cell phones have less of a presence in the high school. So we'll be having a discussion with him about that soon. And just kind of a preliminary learning about what it is. It's a program called Yonder, I believe. And it pretty much just like students get locked pouches to put their phones in throughout the day. And then they're unlocked at the end of the day, is my impression. So we're going to learn more about that soon, which is exciting. That kind of ties in with some of the mental health work we've been doing as well as trying to get students to be more engaged in classrooms. So we'll see where that goes if the student union ends up kind of supporting that specific idea, or if we're gonna go in a different direction with that. And then the anti-racism subcommittee has been meeting with department heads to talk about our diversity supplement and how the implementation would that would of that would look for different departments, what classes department heads think would fit under the supplement and kind of figure out criteria for each department about kind of what would qualify. And then standard-based grading, we talked about that at SAC, but we've pretty much just been talking to administration and also kind of having informal conversations with students and teachers and kind of just collecting general feedback about standard-based grading and trying to figure out how to make it work better for everybody. And then the lending library subcommittee has been trying to get sanitary products in all of the bathrooms. And I believe that's moving forward. Yeah, so hopefully by next year, every bathroom in the high school will have sanitary products available for people to use for free. Yeah, I think that's about it.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Lila. Any questions for Lila? All right, I don't see any. So thank you very, oh, that was a claps from member Davis, not a question. Thank you very, very much, Lila, for that. So my, so I know Julie Spencer Robinson is here and Principal Chuket are here for presentations. And I hope you will indulge me if I ask you to wait a little bit. There was a request that Public Health Director Meredith O'Leary join us today. And so, but she's only able to be, she has another engagement, so she can't be here for long. So unless there's an objection, I would like to move up item J to now. So this is vote on possible modification of of policy EBCFA. This is the face mask and face covering policy. So again, sorry, sorry to the two of you. And I know particularly Principal Chuket, you got bumped last time, but we will get there. But if it's okay, I'd like to move this up so Director O'Leary can join us. Thank you. Okay, so member Stein and member Levy, would you like to present this and make a motion when you are done? Member Stein?
Sure, yeah, I'm actually I'm not sure, you know, why I was why I was particularly added for this item, but I'm happy to sort of I think give some perspective, which might clear maybe some of the confusion that I think was expressed in the public comments. From my understanding of the process and where we are in late March, when we voted to rescind the mask mandate. One of the things we also did was vote to amend the masking policy in line with the recommendations made by Public Health Director O'Leary that were requested by Dr. Provost. And at that meeting, Kyra read through what those recommendations were. There were two recommendations in that that made their way into the policy. And they were recommended actions for when to trigger, the word trigger is not used, but when universal masking should be reinstated. The first of those had to do with the new February 2022 CDC metrics hitting high. The second one was if Shack determined that there was in-school transmission of COVID-19 and that there was an increased risk of infection. And my understanding, my perspective, is that the move to universal masking was made based on this change to the policy, specifically the second recommendation to return universal masking, which was significant in-school spread and a significant increase in risk of disease. So I believe that that is, you know, was the intent of the committee in adopting those recommendations into our policy. I don't know if they've been it hasn't been that long since we did that. So I don't even know if the subcommittee for policy has taken those recommendations and put them into a different format or a different language, but that's what we voted to do at that meeting. So I think, given that decision that the superintendent, based on what he's hearing from Shack, was acting exactly in accordance with the policy in reinstating the mask mandate. There's a couple difficulties, I think, or questions about this that we didn't see then, or, you know. This is an evolving process, right? But one is that, at the time, there was still a shack that committee members were attending. And since then, there's there is still a shack, but committee members are not attending. And there's going to be a new ad hoc committee, which we voted on last time as it relates to the open meeting law complaints. And then a recommendation from our attorney that we shouldn't make the shack an open meeting, and we should do this other thing. So there's sort of an incongruity there. I don't know how we want to think about that or what the best ways to think about it. The other incongruity is that, or difficulty is that in sort of establishing these two triggers, we didn't establish a trigger to relax the reinstatement of the mask mandate. So nowhere in amended policy does it state, it would be like a two-week period, or Shack would what we're sort of saying is we're seeing in-school spread, but now we're put masks back on. So we're likely to see a reduction in in-school transmission. But how do we know that it's not just going to spike back up if we go for 10 days and you know, we're no longer having a lot of cases and then we're not having a lot of cases because we're universally masked, and then we take the mask off again. So I tried to figure out how to think about this myself. And I looked back over some of the historical dashboards that the city of Northampton has put together across this period of time. So if you look at where we were on March 24th, when we made the move to unmask, we were at new CDC low. It was a few weeks after that that we became medium. And shortly after that, we saw our first cluster of a classroom in Northampton. And we've seen an accelerating number of cases to the point we reached last week since then. Every week going up, going up, going up. So the thing I draw from this is that maybe our threshold should be that medium transit, you know, that medium transmission level. I, this is just based on this experience, right? So I don't know if, instead of going to high, universal masking should trigger when we get to medium. The new high is four times the height of the old high. So it's 200 cases per 100,000. So I don't know if maybe we should switch it to when we get to medium, the masks go on, and when we get back to low, the masks go off. But I think we need to find a way to include in the policy, if we're going to have this kind of a trigger, what's the trigger to relax the the universal mask mandate as well? And it seems like if we made the decision when things were low to remove them, and then it went to medium and we had to reinstate it, maybe that's that's the space we need to be in. But again, this is just how I've been trying to think about it. And, yeah, so, you know, I'm not sure if this is helpful or what else you want to add, but that's my perspective.
Thank you. Member Levy?
Thanks. I I asked that this be on the agenda, and I really appreciate Director O'Leary, your being here. Because I wanted to ask questions regarding what member Stein was just saying. My concern, based on the medical practitioners that I've been speaking with and the studies that I have been reading, is that because of the lower testing rates in general that are, that we're not detecting a number of the cases that are present in our community that would then bump the community level from low to medium to high or back down. And I actually wanted to ask Director O'Leary, and this was a conversation actually that we had when we made this decision about what are the metrics we should be using, given that testing is not as prevalent in our community anymore or nationwide anymore. And we had talked about wastewater testing. You know, there are different things that came up. So I would I would be really curious to hear Director O'Leary, what your recommendation is for what we should be using. Do you think we should still be, I mean, I think you probably don't, because we have a mask mandate back implemented that we should do you think we should still be using what we had decided upon, which was to be at high for two weeks? Or is there a different metric that we should be using? That's my question to you. And the other statement that I would just like to make after listening to public comment is I very much appreciate all the different perspectives and how hard it is to go back to wearing masks. And my understanding is that, given the nature of this pandemic, this is a little bit of what we are going to be facing is times when we will be able to take masks off and times when we need to put them back on. And so I'm with member Stein, I would like to really have clarity and transparency for our community about what those metrics are that we use both to put the masks back on and also to take them off. And I also wonder, Director O'Leary, in answering the question, if you could also respond to whether we should be considering positive cases within our specific schools as a metric.
Thank you. Thank you, Director O'Leary, for joining us. We really appreciate it.
No, thank you for inviting me in. And those are great points and great questions. And I took some notes, and I'm hoping that I'm able to answer them. But if I forget something, let's just bring it back. You know, I just got off Board of Health meeting to jump onto this meeting. And one thing that we've been discussing and have been discussing for two years is having a roadmap and how to move forward, right, living with COVID, because it's not going anywhere. And I, and I mentioned this because we've had this discussion almost every single one of our Board of Health meetings, talking about setting metrics. But that is a moving target, and they change, and it's constantly evolving. So I'm not really a fan of setting or quantifying numbers, you know? And I think I've actually expressed that before in front of the school committee. What I'm really looking at when we're talking about, you know, masks on or or off in schools is what's happening in the school community, not so much the community at large, because we saw in our last surge that we had a spike in cases in Northampton community. But still, there were very few cases, even at our most peak point in our last surge, very few cases in our school community. And I don't believe we had any clusters, and there was really no identifiable in-school transmission. And that is when we had a very robust, robust, excuse me, contact tracing team, both on the school side and the health department side, both working together to make sure that we did all the contact tracing. Now, the events that just happened were, last week, the Shack meeting met. There was a gradual increase of cases that had been happening over the course of four weeks. Perhaps the beginning of April, I can say. And the city kind of mimicked too, just this gradual upward trend of cases, slower, much slower than what we saw in January. But we were seeing nonetheless cases go up. On Wednesday, there was a red flag, and people were concerned. I wasn't on the Shack meeting myself. I had a conflict. However, my nurse was there and presented the Northampton data. Lisa Safran was there, presented presented school data. And the recommendation at that point was a mask advisory by the superintendent that went out Friday morning. Well, Friday afternoon, my nurse, public health nurse, and I reviewed the data that was given to us by Lisa Safran. And we analyzed, and we did some analysis, and we jumped from Wednesday to Friday afternoon by 117%. So right then and there, and we had clusters, and we had known transmission in the school. With that prompted me to ask Superintendent Provost to have an emergency meeting of the Shack so we could discuss this numbers and take action on that. Had we set the metric, and I heard school committee member Stein say that, you know, one of the metrics we kind of did state back then was the county going into the red, right? I'm not sure that's ever going to happen, because the CDC green, yellow, red map, we go to green to yellow really easy. That's just 200 cases. But going from yellow to red probably will never happen, because it's all about death and the number of COVID cases, hospitalization cases, right? And 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 our 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 hospitalizations right now, we're at capacity, like 85% plus full in our hospital, but they're non-COVID cases, because we have wonderful treatments now, right? If people get sick, and within five days, you can get medications to help. So people aren't getting hospitalized as frequently as they were. And we've got vaccines, so people aren't getting as sick as they were. School council member Levy, do you have a question for me?
Yeah, I actually wonder if you could go into some detail about the point you just made, because if if we listen to the, a lot of the public comment, the, some of the points that are made is is like because we're not going to be in the red, and because we're not having hospitalizations, and we're not having deaths, because we have vaccines, because we have treatments. Why do we need masks? Can you can you respond to that question?
And I just want to disclose, I was not on during public comment session, so I'm, I don't know what was said. So your question to me is, if we're not going in the red, then why are we going back to masks, right? Because we know masks work. We know that good filtration masks, when everybody is wearing them, reduces transmission. That has not changed, no matter what, through the course of two-plus years. Masks work. What's changed is, we thought cloth masks work, and that now we have data and evidence saying that they don't work really well. But if all parties are wearing But if all parties are wearing good infiltration masks, such as surgical or KN95 or N95 masks, they reduce transmission significantly. So we know that's a fact. So with that being said, and the status of of where we are with school cases, you know, the multiple of, I think, all of our schools, I I'm not positive on that, right? But we have cases in transmissions, known transmissions happening in their school. The percent of increase of cases in our schools. We anecdotally are hearing that we have a significant amount of staff sick in our schools. We know that by talking to the state epidemiologists, other schools are feeling these same types of impacts right now and are talking about having to close down because of staff shortages. We want to keep our schools open. So we also know that there are schools that have been closed down in Connecticut and Maine. Again, it's more disruptive to our students to have the schools closed down and we don't have remote learning options here, hybrid options for every for, you know, for anything. So masks are a well-known known source to, excuse me, a well-known strategy to provide so source control, right? But we also have to think about other strategies too. This is not just one public health measure we're talking about. We're also talking about, you know, opening windows, you're using HEPA filters, spending more time outside. Tents are being delivered to the school this week. So we have increased accessibility of outdoor learning and eating opportunities. Testing, testing, testing. I can't say anymore of the importance of taking tests. If you're sick, stay home until you get your test results back. We're doing pool testing in the schools. They hand out the at-home antigen tests. The health department has as many antigen tests as any person needs. Call me if you need them. Tests are are pretty reliable. If you have been exposed and are symptomatic, stay home, get a PCR test. And also vaccinations. These are the other prevention preventative measures that we must continue and increase in addition to masks. Now, when do we take masks off? I said to during the Shack meeting, let's reevaluate it at two weeks. Let's see where the data is. I'm not saying this is a forever end of the school strategy, but I I think it needs constant reevaluation.
Thank you, Member Stein.
Yeah, I just had two questions. Thank you for all that. That was really helpful. And one is, I have a really hard time when I'm trying to look at that new CDC metric with all of the different variables and what moves from from medium to high and all this. Especially with the hospital case counts and like, how do you actually figure out those and where's that information? But in any case, I wonder what you think is unique about Hampshire that will keep us from getting to red with Franklin County in red, with Berkshire County in red, with Worcester County in red, like why do you feel so certain that we won't get to red here? Like, and I don't know if it's something about the metric and the amount of people, like, I don't really understand how that how the new metric shape like it's it's more complex, I guess, with the hospitalizations and the deaths. Like, why are those counties red and like, you know, other counties in Massachusetts red, but we're not going to get there?
Yeah, well, I I I feel like the the red simply states number of COVID admissions to the hospitals. And I I think something is missing there. It's not really.
Sorry, you should I shouldn't have said red too. I should have said like high. So like they're listed now as high.
Okay, gotcha.
Sorry, my apologies.
Okay, so you so hypothesize why I think we won't get high? Well, we do have higher vaccination rates, booster rates than other counties. I think it was about a month ago. I saw that Hampshire County had the highest booster rate in the state of Massachusetts. So that could definitely be a factor. I still feel like we've created a culture in Hampshire County that, you know, wear masks if you're comfortable, wear masks if you're in a public setting that you might be in close quarters. I think we do an exemplary job of promoting good public health practices and, you know, social distancing. There could be a variety of things on Councilmember Stein, but it's it's that's my hypothesis. For a fact, I can't speak to that, but off the top of my mind, that's what I'm thinking.
Thanks. And just one more question. You know, one of the things we're, I think, potentially faced with tonight, given the fact that we added in the previous recommendations to the masking policy is figuring out potentially some language that would sort of do what you described, which is like, you know, the the Shack will meet again and whatever date, the 20th or, you know, whatever day the Shack's going to meet and talk about, look, evaluate the data. I'm wondering I'm wondering how to like phrase that, right? I mean, maybe it's as simple as saying because it's not a metric, right? It's sort of the thing I liked about that second recommendation so much and why I think it was so useful in this moment was like, well, we're seeing clear indications of spread of disease, right? So I I'm wondering if there's maybe it's as simple as some language that might say, you know, you know, given an assessment of the data in Northampton and the school population, we think the risk of in school transmission is like, you know, is okay to to remove like, is there some version of that that you think would be?
So we like to look at COVID case trends. I think that's the word that you were looking for. Both, you know, community wide and school wide. COVID case trends, COVID related absences, evidence of continued in-school transmission. I think maybe that's the language you might be looking for.
Thank you. Yes.
Member Stein, did you have a follow up to that or?
No, no, I'm sorry. I'm just trying to get that all down while I remember. I don't I don't have a follow up question. I'm sorry. Yeah, I'll I'll mute.
No problem, Member Levy?
Thanks. That was the direction I was going to go as well. I completely hear you that this is nuanced, that our our targets are going to change, given all the different factors. And I also know that we've got to be able to provide some transparency to our community. And so I appreciate that language. I appreciate the focus on on the potential for in-school transmission. And I think, Member Stein, I saw you writing, so hopefully you got that down. I Director O'Leary, can you just help us understand when you meet in two weeks to reassess? What are you looking for and what would allow you to to say, okay, we can take the masks back off?
Um, I'm looking for obviously cases to continually be going down. I absences, you know, less absences. No more clusters, evidence of no more in-school transmission. I can't quantify it for you. That's really, really hard. It's just all of the trends that, you know, we looked at when we made the recommendation to put the masks on. I think if I were to kind of enumerate, I would look back at our our dashboard and look at the graph on perhaps maybe when we lifted the mask mandate in the schools, can we get back to there? And so we lifted again. It's something to consider. Yeah.
Thanks.
My answer or did I skirt around it?
I both. There's a little bit of an answer there. And then I think I do think we as a committee need to land on something that we can put in our policy, but also communicate to our our community so that folks know and understand how we're making these decisions and what needs to be in place or not. And so it sounds like but but again, like if our rates are here and we say, well, we just we need to see a decrease in rates and they decreased to here, is that okay? Or do they need a decrease to here? So again, I still feel a little unsure of what what exactly we should be saying so that there's clarity.
No, I totally understand the concept of people wanting on ramps and on and off ramps. I get the importance of that. It's just it's just not this one size fits all. And you know, if you do set this this metric, for lack of better word, when, you know, we get to whatever it is, let's pull a number, X amount of cases, then we're going to take the masks off. I mean, is that hard and steady? Because in three weeks from now, we could be dealing with a different variant that just blows that metric out of the water and I just I I'm afraid of of quantifying it. So it's all about current data and and what's available and looking at trends.
Member Davis?
Thank you. I I mostly want to echo what Member Levy was was saying because I think I think this is the correct way to put it, that maybe we could think of it as a both and that we could say right now, this is what we know. And this is the number. These are the numbers that we would be comfortable with. If if the numbers are going down, the clusters are X, the absences are such and such. Right now, knowing what we know, this is a comfortable, smart set of data that we could use for masks on or masks off and be transparent that we all know as grownups that there are variants and that this could change. But right now, knowing what we know because I could hear aloud and clear the differences of opinion and the concerns as we all heard and I would be very, I would be more satisfied if we had a number to start with and then P S, this might have to change because of the nature of COVID.
Can I just counter that? Sure. Let me just pull an arbitrary number out and we use 15 or 20 as your number, the magic number. What if that 15 or 20 cases that we're dealing with in this one point of time are because of a large family gathering and has nothing to do with in-school transmission? You're going to say that we're going to put masks back on? I mean, you have to be very thoughtful and mindful when we're we're looking at data because I guess a story that you wanted to, I guess, is what I'm saying. So and it's my job to do a deep dive and get very granular with the data and look at what's happening. So that's all I'm trying to say. What you guys do with this information I give obviously is up to you, but I just want you to see a different perspective of how I look at the data and what numbers actually mean.
Can I just add one clarification onto that? So so for me, I guess I'm thinking if the data that, and I don't know if we can see this in what we come up with, just because of the way people test now. I mean, I think that's really a significant thing is that we don't see test results in the same way we were earlier in the pandemic. Because people just doing it in their bathroom and throwing it in the trash, you know, but if we see the absent, if we're looking, for example, at the absences at school, the cluster at a school, then whether or not this is the way I see it, including myself as a teacher myself in a different district. If a family goes away and comes back and they're bringing COVID into the school, well, then there's COVID in the school, whether they got it at Disney World or from their classmate. And maybe you're we're talking about two different things. So that's what I was just, are you're talking about like grownups in a cluster, not students?
Students. I and and I I I'm not going to pretend I know the answer to this question, so I'm going to ask it and I'm not asking to be flippant whatsoever. The process, what's, why not just trust in the Shack's recommendation? You guys put this committee, this advisory committee together that's full of professionals to help make these decisions. I I don't know where this went awry and maybe that will be helpful for me to understand.
I don't know if a member Seraphie Cox is looking to answer that question, but I'm gonna call on her.
Thank you. And Director O'Leary, that was something that I've been thinking for much of many of these conversations. So I appreciate you asking it and my answer would be I I I am glad that you have recommendations. And my question, my original question actually was really kind of what, why, I don't quite understand why this is on our agenda this evening. What are we being asked to? Why are we being asked to revise this policy? And Director O'Leary, it's my understanding from hearing you speak that you're not recommending to us that we revise the policy. It was it was Member Levy who had put it on to try and codify some particular metric, which Member Levy, with all of the love and respect in the world, we've been talking about this tension between specific metrics and and the the nuance that comes at looking at granular data. We've been having the same conversation with Director O'Leary for basically two years and, you know, on and off and maybe it's because I have a public health professor as a wife, but I really want to 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 take Director Leary's you know, I think that looking at the way that I hear about my wife talking about public health data, it is not cut and dry. So I I I support that for for Director O'Leary's position. So I guess the reason I raised my hand was I'm just trying to understand like, there's no motion on the floor. This is just a big conversation and we have a bunch of other things on our agenda that frankly have more actionable items. So I I guess I would like clarity on what it is that we're doing.
Member Levy, would you like to, can you still not unmute?
I can. I was just hoping you would read my intentionally called on me, but I was gonna say, I was trying to say that I'm happy to respond. So I think for me, it's hard to make a motion until it was hard for me to think about what the motion needed to be until hearing from Director O'Leary, which is why I didn't put a motion on the floor. The reason, and I apologize if this wasn't clear, the reason I asked for this to be on our agenda was that my reading of the policy, and maybe I misreading, my understanding is it it doesn't say that the Shack can can advise the superintendent to make changes at any time to mask mandates that we at the school committee need to either what either we get into red for high for two weeks and then masks come back on or the school committee changes the policy. And so where we are now is we did something that I think wasn't quite in line with the policy and I I don't think we shouldn't have done it. I think there are two things happening here. One is I think we need to shift the recommend or the guidelines that are in the policy, the and these are metrics and I get it that that metrics are, it's not clear what metrics we need to have, but we need to have something that guides when masks go on. And we need to have something that says when they're going to come back off and that's not in the policy either. And the other thing that I think we need is I think we need some kind of a statement that says also if we're not meeting for a month and there and there's something that happens in the community that the Shack or Director O'Leary and the superintendent have the authority to to make changes and that we do not as a school committee and that we do not, as a school committee, need to come together and make that. And and that was, that's not a part of our policy either. So I'm getting closer to making a motion. Uh, maybe member Stein is ready to make a motion. That's where, that's why I put this on. Uh, and if you read it differently, I'm really open to it to that, because maybe we don't need to have this conversation. Maybe it's all in there and I'm just not seeing it. Also, I got a kitten in case anybody wants to see it.
Yes, yes, to the kitten. Um, in the meantime, uh, member Robbins.
So I, I also wonder why, um, we're having this conversation. And I wonder if it's something that should actually go back to having a discussion with rules and policy about. But it does read to me clearly that, um, about what we're going to do. I definitely appreciate Director O'Leary's, um, presenting to us tonight. I think that transparency and that discussion about how those decisions are made are really important and very helpful. And I, I guess I feel like, um, as we go through this pandemic or the follow up to it or those other pieces, it would be wonderful to have Director O'Leary be able to come meet with us on that regular basis and be able to share. This is how, um, this is how things are now, and this is how I've made the decision. And I am actually quite comfortable with what the decision, how the decision was made this last week, and I think it was a good one. Um, and I'm, I'm grateful for that. And I agree that it was, there's not clarity in our policy to cover that when it happened. And maybe we do need to build that in, but I'm not sure the whole school community, uh, committee needs to be part of that discussion at this point until it comes back, unless somebody has a good motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, let me go, uh, can I go to member Seraphie Cox and then I'll go back to you, member Stein.
Um, thank you. I, I read the policy more closely. And there is a sentence that says, uh, the Northampton Public Schools will follow the current DUCI guidance unless the superintendent's Health Advisory Committee and/or the city's Health Department decide to follow modified guidance and provide an explanation to the NPS community. And from what I understand of the timeline that both the superintendent laid out in writing and that Director O'Leary laid out in more detail this evening, that is what happened. The Shack met and decided on a revised set of recommendations that the superintendent implemented. Um, so I do think that this situation is covered in the current policy. And if there are specific recommendations that you would make to clarify it, I would love to see those. And I think that they should be brought to the Rules and Policy Committee at its next meeting, which is in like a week and a half or something like that. So, um, so I would make a motion to refer this, uh, this, uh, this item to the Rules and Policy Subcommittee, um, and to ask, uh, member Levy to work with the superintendent, perhaps to to come with specific recommendations for changes.
Okay, that will, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Oh, second, that is similar to the motion I was gonna make, but can I offer a bit of clarity now? So they don't have to come back to some China, although, Mike, sorry, member Stein, your, your hands up.
Yeah, and I've been in the queue here.
Sorry, sorry. Just seconding, just seconding.
Well, I just wanted to say that one of the things that I think isn't captured yet in our policy is, in my recollection, and when I looked back at the the last meeting or the meeting from the twenty fourth, one of the things Kaya did was make a motion, was was passed with our vote for appeal to add in all of the recommended language that Director O'Leary had provided to us. And included in that was the following. Um, recommended thresholds for universal masking requirements in school. First one is CDC community level in Hampshire County elevates to high for two or more weeks.
Member Stein, can I clarify what, instead of reading everything that that is? Can I just clarify, are you saying that the current version of the policy is not what we voted on? That is a clerical error and should absolutely be rectified, but does not need another vote of the school committee. And so.
Right, but the issue I'm trying to point out is that
Yeah.
the, the relevant sentence here, which I think authorized the superintendent to act as he did, is the following. Shack determines based on assessment of evidence of increased school COVID transmission, that there is an increased risk of disease. The problem I'm pointing out now is that since this is our policy, we don't have an off ramp. So to have the.
So bring, bring specific recommendations to the Subcommittee and that will be beautiful and wonderful and and robust discussion.
But they're gonna meet in two weeks. We don't have a policy to cover that.
We have a policy that, to cover the on ramp.
Not the off ramp. They're gonna have a conversation in two weeks about an off ramp.
Okay, I don't know what, which off and on we're talking about, that the masks coming off.
Back off, yes. So we don't have a policy that states this, and we're having this work being done that is not in accordance with the policy. So that, I think, you know, but yeah, so I, I think that, you know, for, I think, I didn't ask for this to be on the agenda. Um, I'm not quite sure how I would have gone about doing it. But you know, we referred updates that we made collectively to to the pol, about this policy two months ago to the committee. Those haven't been done yet either. Things are moving faster than the policy can, committee can work, because there are so many policies that they're working on and so little time. So I think that, I I I'm not saying we need to make a change tonight, but I I I think we're headed to a place where we're not acting in accordance with whatever our policy is. And 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 beyond that, though, like, the reason why the school committee has to be the ones that authorize these things and set policies for all these things is because that is our role. And we went through this endlessly and we just lived through, you know, six weeks ago, this, because these are political decisions at the end of the day, right? We went through an intense lobbying campaign. We had one earlier this evening. These are not, and there's no simple metric that will set us free, as Director O'Leary has pointed out. So I will again say that that is why we are having these conversations. Um, I think there's better ways to have them, and I think there's effective ways to modify policy. And our normal wheels around policies can't keep up with COVID. But, um, that, that's why we're having these conversations. Um, thanks.
Member Levy, did you have something else to add?
Not really. Uh, I guess I, the clarity that I would add to what I would hope the Rules and Policy Committee would would bring back to us, similar to what member Stein was saying, was that there would be clarity around when masks are taken back off. And, uh, I think if it's, if it's simply up to the Shack and that recommendation, then maybe that doesn't need to be in there either. Maybe it's just like a nuanced little half sentence that gets added. But I'm happy to have this go to the Rules and Policy Subcommittee. Thanks.
And any of that information that can be provided to the Subcommittee Chair in writing would be especially useful.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Can I ask for, um, someone to reiterate the motion, please?
My motion was to refer, um, policy E B C F A, face masks and face coverings, to the Rules and Policy Subcommittee to clarify, uh, the concerns, uh, raised this evening that will be provided to the Subcommittee Chair in writing.
Thank you.
Uh, do, member Levy, you looked a little confused. I know I I said it differently before, but I think provided more clarity.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, roll call, please, Annie. Member Seraphie Cox.
Yes.
Member Stein.
Yes.
Member Levy.
Yes.
Member Miller.
Yes.
Member Goldman.
Yes.
Member Agna.
Yes.
Member Davis.
Yes.
Name Shara.
Yes.
Member Robbins.
Yes.
And member Gazy.
Yes.
Okay, um, thank you, Director O'Leary. We're deeply grateful for you joining us this evening. We appreciate it. She can't hear all, do you wanna?
I was just saying, thank you for having me. Thank you for inviting me. Have a good evening.
Bye. Um, okay, so I would like to move now to D, the Equity Audit Audit Process, um, with Principal Choquette, who, uh, waited patiently at the last meeting and, um, has waited patiently at this meeting. And so this, um, there is no vote for this. This is a presentation by Principal Choquette. Welcome, Principal Choquette.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for having me. Um, you know, I just, I I just want to say off that, I want to be clear that I don't come claiming to be an expert in equity audits and also, um, that I'm not here to, um, share Northampton's Equity Audit Process, which I did see a post tonight on Facebook that that's what was happening. This is just me sharing information about, um, equity audits and my experience in, um, conducting an equity audit. So I don't want people to think that I'm presenting, um, your process for an equity audit, um, as I had heard rumblings of that. So, um, but it is my understanding that, um, there are folks talking about, um, an equity audit at, um, the high school. And so I was asked to come share, um, what I know about equity audits and a little bit about my experience in conducting an equity audit. Um, but before I share, um, my particular experience in doing that, um, I think it's important just to make sure that everyone here and who's listening, um, understands what an equity audit is. Um, in the broad sense, um, an equity audit is using evidence to inform decisions about improving teaching and learning. Um, it helps to identify places to improve with the goal of providing optimal teaching and learning for all students. An equity audit should be part of a broader plan and is best conducted in ways that surface perspectives from a wide range of stakeholders, including students and families. Um, I believe you received a resource I shared with you from Unify High School. Um, it's, um, just a resource that had some really great information about equity audits, but I really liked the way they described, um, an equity audit, so I'm just gonna share that with you. Um, they describe it as a means to identify, assess, and tackle issues of inequity in school practice and policies and to assure that every student succeeds regardless of household income, race, gender, or zip code. And so equity audits really should have a purpose. In other words, you know, what, what is the goal of the equity audit? If Northampton wants to conduct an equity audit at the high school, what is the purpose? What is the goal of that equity audit? Um, it requires a lot of data collection. And it's really important that that data collection includes historical context and trends, um, that the district or a particular school have seen over a period of time. Um, they should focus on three broad areas, which I believe is also in that document I shared. Um, teacher quality, educational programs, and student achievement. And there, and I can't stress this next part enough, there absolutely needs to be protocols around data analysis, um, around, um, interviews, if, whether it's with individual, um, people or focus groups. And it really is important to have those protocols to ensure that there is no bias. They are not quick, so my hope is that if we're thinking of an equity audit, that we're not thinking of trying to do something by June twenty seventh, because, um, I I would not recommend that. It is a long process and it does take a lot of time. Um, but they can open our eyes to inequities and barriers that are getting in the way of all students being successful and having equal access and opportunities, um, to learn. And so that's a little bit about equity audits. And, um, so I just want to share with you my experience and kind of the context of the equity, equity audit, um, that I conducted. So, um, mine, I believe I did in the fall of two thousand and seventeen, and it was part of my doctoral program. And, um, it was done in a city just south of Boston, and I can't share the name of the district because it wasn't a public audit. Um, but the purpose of our audit, um, that we had to do was to look, um, across four elementary schools in this district um, at two programs that they had and to look to see if, uh, there were any inequities between these two pro, programs. And the two programs were, um, two pathways that the elementary students had to take, starting in first grade, either a pathway of French immersion or a pathway of, um, English STEM innovation. And, um, some of the things that we were looking at, where we looked at the representation of race and disability in each of those programs, equity gap identification in each of those programs, parent and community engagement, um, between the two programs, and struc, structural and cultural barriers in each of those programs. And through our data collection and analysis, um, using datas from observations, interviews, focus groups, we then created an action plan, uh, for the district. Um, earlier I had talked about the importance of having a purpose and goals of an equity audit. Um, it's also really important to have, um, you know, kind of like guiding questions as you go through this process. And so the guiding, just to share, um, so you have some context and an example of what that might be. For our audit, our guiding questions were, how does an affluent suburban community adapt to changing racial demographics? Is there a relationship between the racial representation in the French immersion program and the English STEM innovation program? Does enrollment in the French immersion program impact the identification of in access to disability services for students in need? And are there equitable allocations of faculty support available to provide those services? And after conducting, um, the equity audit, you know, um, or after conducting our, our observations, our interviews, um, over the course of several visits. Um, and this was done, um, a little bit quicker because it was part of a class, so we had a semester to do this. Um, we shared our report with the the superintendent after. Um, and I think that you should have received the protocol that we used for the data analysis. Um, I did send that to be part of the packet, but we used a data analysis protocol, um, to do all that and created our report that we shared with the superintendent. Um, and again, I'm gonna say this again, it is so important to use protocols because it's very easy, um, to start analyzing data, um, and information that you collect. And it's very easy for bias to come in, our personal opinions to come in. Um, so it's extremely important to use protocols when doing this analysis of of the data. Um, I also would recommend during the interview process of recording people, but you do need permission to do that. Um, and, um, typically there's a script or a form, um, that you can use for that. And then just finally, um, I just want to say, um, it, it really was a great experience to be able to have conducted one. It was a lot of work, um, and a lot of time. Um, but it can be powerful and it should not be done quickly. And like I said before, um, it really needs to have a purpose, there needs to be a goal to it. Um, and the intention should be to ensure that either schools and districts are providing equal access and opportunity for all students to succeed. Um, stakeholders must be willing to see and accept the barriers causing inequities and be committed to removing those barriers in order for all students to achieve educational excellence. And that might mean we have to be willing to accept that maybe we were wrong about the things that we thought about something, um, which, um, through data and observations and everything that you collect, um, will help you through that. And so that's just a little bit about my experience in conducting one and what I know about them. As I said in the beginning, this is not your process. I, um, was just invited here to come share the process that I went through. So, thank you, and, um.
Thank you.
If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer those. I also have lots of documents, if people are interested. I have like our observation protocol, our interview protocol. Um, there's great examples out there of questions, um, that should be asked, um, or can be asked, um, around um, an equity audit, and they can be tailored to individual schools or whole districts, just depending on, again, what that purpose is, what the goal is of an equity audit.
Thank you for sharing all of that with us. Are there, um, some questions? Or just, uh, member Stein?
Uh, hi, Principal Choquette. Thanks so much for presenting, um, and being here and teaching us about your experience in in doing this work. I guess, uh, my, my question really is, and i- is really like, you know, if the, if the district wanted to do an equity audit or a school wanted to do an equity audit, like, what are some of the things you would recommend, they either think about, or some of the actions they take in order to begin that planning process, or or how, how should they think about approaching it?
Sure, so, um, well, I would recommend not one person doing it by themselves, that there certainly, um, should be a team, um, because it is a lot, and that team should be representative of, um, you know, I would say our, our students, our community, um, our faculty, you really want a nice representation of, um, who, who we are in Northampton. Um, and then the next thing is, I, the first thing I, I guess people should have is, so what is the purpose? What is our purpose of doing an equity audit? What is our purpose of doing an equity audit? Are we going in for a specific reason? So like when we did ours, we knew we were looking at inequities between two pathways that students could take in, in the elementary schools in this specific community. And, you know, were there inequities? And if so, what were those inequities? And there were many between, between the French immersion program and the students who stayed in the English STEM innovation program. And so that purpose, like I, you know, and whether or not that's something you all come up with as a school committee, if it's something, you know, equity audit committee works with you on, but there definitely needs to be a purpose in the goal. What is the goal? Why are we conducting this equity audit? And the hope is because we want to make sure that we are creating opportunities to learn for all students that, and all students have equal access. But it might be that you're looking at one school and, and, you know, without going into, you know, what things that we've been talking about in this district, you might be looking at a program. But, so I would start with what, what is the purpose? What is our goal? What do we want out of an equity audit? And making sure we have a committee or a group of people that is really representative of our community. And that does include students and families and community members as well.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions or comments for Principal Shoket? I don't see any. Thank you so much for sharing all of that. We really very much appreciate it.
Thank you. You know where to find me. And it is only 8:15, and I know I was on the agenda for after nine o'clock, so I'm very grateful to have been on earlier. So thank you very much and thank you for having me.
Thank you. Bye.
Bye.
Okay, so next, let's go to our other presentation, which is on school choice in the North Hampton Public Schools. And I welcome Dr. Spencer Robinson, who's joining us this evening.
Hello.
Hey. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me. You all have been on the receiving end of lots of information. I wonder if there's any room in your brains left for more. I have a slide, I have some slides that I think are going to be shared.
Yeah, are, are you going to share them or?
I think Ms. Thompson was.
Oh, okay, you're the co-host now. Annie, are you doing it? Or would you like Dr. Spencer Robinson to do it?
Well, I'm happy to do it, but Julie can, it might be better if Julie does do it because she can control it a little better. Does that work for you, Julie?
Yeah.
Let me get it and then see if I can share. Maybe you're creating some space in your brains now. Okay, is that working?
Yes.
Yeah, great, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Hello, my name is Julie Spencer Robinson. I worked in the district from 1992 to 2019, and I recently completed my dissertation study of North Hampton Public School parents. So you're getting two doctoral studies in a row here. It is titled Active Choice or Default Decision: When Families Who Reside in a Competitive School-Choice Environment Enroll Children in Their District Schools. Thank you for inviting me to share my findings with you. Hang on, I'm going to hit this, whoops. We have the next slide now, good. Okay, so I became, I first became interested in school choice as a teacher at JFK Middle School. In the early 2000s, I noticed the demographics of my classroom changing with more and more students who didn't live in North Hampton. It also seemed like there was an increasing number of city families who were not choosing the district schools. And there was definitely growing tension in the community related to the issue of charter schools. In October of 2010, the Daily Hampshire Gazette asked me to be part of a focus group to discuss the film Waiting for Superman, which was critical of district school systems and promoted charter schools as an alternative. I knew by then that I really wanted to learn more about the issue of school choice and how it was impacting the district in which I lived and worked. So I enrolled in the Educational Policy Research and Administration Doctor Program at UMass Amherst, and here is some of what I learned. Public school choice became a meaningful policy tool in the 1990s, when legislators in Massachusetts and throughout the nation significantly expanded families' access to it, primarily in the forms of charter schools and inter-district choice programs. That's where a family lives in one district but enrolls their child in another. School choice policy rests on two assumptions, that, that it will promote equity of opportunity by allowing any student the freedom to exit an underperforming school for a better performing one, and that district schools exposed to competition would be more responsive to students and families and ultimately more effective. Critics expressed concern that it would exacerbate student sorting on the basis of race, socioeconomic background, and ability. There's been a great deal of research that explores the impact of public school choice on the students and families who leave their assigned districts and on those who are left behind. But much less is known about the school enrollment decisions of families who attend their local public schools. And that was the focus of my study. It was guided by these questions. Did families intentionally choose to live in North Hampton so that their children could attend the district schools? There's, there's a lot of anecdotal, anecdotal information about that, but not really any more formal data. At the time of student enrollment, what school characteristics appealed to in-district parents? Were they aware of other educational options for their children? Did they consider them and why? Where did they get their information about schools? Were their parents who would have liked to exit the district but couldn't? What barriers did they face? Would they still choose to leave the district schools if they could? And for each of these questions, were there differences related to parents' race, socioeconomic background, or education level? I chose North Hampton as a study site because I was rooted in the community and had firsthand longitudinal experience witnessing the impact of school choice as both an educator and a parent. It is a small district located in a competitive educational environment, where six schools served about 2,400 students. Before the expansion of public school choice, 12% of school-aged children left the district for 21 schools. At the time of my study, 26% of students left for 34 different schools. 11 of these were inter-district public schools and seven were charter schools. North Hampton was both a top sending district in the state and a top receiving district of students through public school choice. And there was a net financial loss to the district of more than $2 million as a result of this student transfer. The first stage of my study was quantitative, a four-minute survey of in-district parents about their school enrollment decisions. And if you took my survey, thank you. I collected 304 completed surveys representing about 25% of North Hampton families, much higher than my target of 10%. However, the pandemic meant that I couldn't administer the survey in person at school-based events and had to rely primarily on building principals sending it out electronically at a time when parents were inundated with email communications. This skewed my data collection toward respondents who were wealthy, well-educated, and older, which has implications for my findings. The race and ethnicity of survey participants was representative of the city's demographics, but the sample wasn't large enough for me to draw conclusions about any related patterns in these parents' decision-making processes. An important area for further research is to learn more about the school enrollment decisions of parents of color, those who are not as well-resourced, and those with less formal education. The second stage of my study was qualitative, where I interviewed a subset of my survey population. Over 100 people volunteered to be interviewed, which I think speaks to the community's interest in the issue of school choice. Six participants were randomly selected from each of these three groups, those who identified as Asian-American, Black, Hispanic or Latino, biracial or mixed race, those reporting household incomes of less than $75,000, and those who identified as white and reporting household incomes of $75,000 and above. Their enrollment experience spanned a period of 17 years, and the majority enrolled their children when they were in preschool or kindergarten, and they were given pseudonyms. With my first research question, I wanted to know the extent to which the district schools factored into people's decisions to live in North Hampton. On the first survey, 70, I'm sorry, on the survey, 76% of respondents reported that the public schools were important or very important in their decision to live in North Hampton. So Rihanna said that we made a decision as to where we would live, knowing that we were planning to have children. And we thought about whether or not we wanted to continue living in North Hampton as we planned to have a family. And then we decided to stay in North Hampton and also try to identify which elementary school we would want our kids to go to and try to find a home in that zone. In exploring why parents decided to enroll their children in the city's schools, an unexpected theme emerged during my interviews, and that was participants' ideological support for public education, which factored into their decision. Mary said, "I think a country should provide a public school education to all of its citizens, and it would be a little bit hypocritical for me to value that as a personal belief and then send my child off to a private school." Miriam stated, "If more families with means were sticking with public schools, public schools would be better. Education should be the great equalizer." It's not, because there are other more systemic problems, right? But it could be this force of equalization. My second research question explored the specific school characteristics that mattered to parents at the time of student enrollment. On the survey, parents were asked for their opinions about 14 characteristics of the North Hampton Public Schools, represented by the blue bars. Then they were asked whether each of those 14 characteristics mattered to their enrollment decision, represented by the orange bars. Academic reputation and teacher quality were viewed most favorably by parents, and they were also the two most important factors in parents' enrollment decisions. School location, LGBTQ acceptance, and student safety were also viewed positively by parents and were important enrollment factors. In the interviews, neighborhood location and student diversity were the characteristics named most frequently by participants as reasons for deciding to enroll their children. Racial and ethnic diversity was prioritized, but parents also valued diversity in students' socioeconomic backgrounds, languages spoken at home, and learning abilities. Alisa spoke to location. "We love the idea of a neighborhood school. We like that we could walk into it. It just felt like a nice, natural transition from being home to like going into a bigger world." And Emily addressed diversity. "I was a little bit disappointed when I saw the racial and ethnic makeup of the public schools here, but then I quickly realized that diversity is more than just race and ethnicity. And quite frankly, there's a lot of kids at her school who aren't white, which I was like, oh, this is actually nice." Community was a top characteristic too, and it was described both as the public schools being a microcosm of the larger community and also the schools fostering a sense of community. Rachel talked about the microcosm aspect. "My value system is to say, yeah, this is what the world looks like. You have a student in your class who's in a wheelchair. You have several students in your class who are learning English now. You have several students in your class who are like two grade levels above you. You have several students in your class who may need to repeat kindergarten. This is what the world is like. The best for you is to grow up, seeing as much of a slice of humanity as I can provide for you in this very, like, self-selected suburb that we live in." Access to special education services was another characteristic that emerged as significant in the interviews, pulling six of the 18 parents into the district. While several described how they successfully advocated for their child's placement at a preferred school within the district, none of them felt like they had a feasible alternative outside of it. Sarah described her experience. "We wanted him to go to a private preschool, actually, but it wasn't happening because he was diagnosed with autism, and the private preschool could not, did not have the capacity to take care of him or his needs at all. So we shifted from the beautiful idea of the outdoor nature preschool to good old-fashioned public preschool, just like we went through with all the supports that he needed." This chart shows how parents rated the significance of each characteristic in their decision to enroll their children in the North Hampton Public Schools. The blue bars represent the 304 survey participants, and the orange bars represent the subset of 18 interview participants. It's interesting to observe the contrast. And of course, it's important to remember that there were two different types of data collection tools. I wanted to know more about parents' awareness of alternatives to the district schools at the time of enrollment, whether they considered them, and if they did, what were their sources of information? The survey revealed that 95% were aware of their educational options, and 58% considered them, lending support to the idea that many of these parents were actively choosing the district schools. In the interviews, all 18 were aware they had options, and 12 considered them. Parents reported a variety of reasons why, and no single clear theme emerged from them. Friends and neighbors were the top sources of information during the school enrollment decision-making process for all survey respondents. And for those who considered their options, parents of their child's friends and school visits were also important sources. My third research question explored potential obstacles to families' exit from. On the survey, respondents were asked if several items mattered in their decision to enroll their child in the North Hampton Public Schools. 41% said they didn't want to or couldn't pay for private school. 22% couldn't homeschool their child. 15% couldn't drive their child to an out-of-district school. And 9% said their child's charter school lottery number wasn't chosen. And I've already mentioned special education as a factor keeping families in the district. In summary, the North Hampton Public Schools were an important factor in participants' decisions to live in the district. Almost all of the parents were aware that they had educational options at the time of their child's school enrollment, and the majority of parents explored these alternatives during their decision-making processes. In this district, located in a competitive choice environment, these parents can and should be considered as actively exercising school choice. District leaders should therefore seek to systematically understand why families choose the schools and what they want from their child's, children's education. This information could be used to inform the development of district policies, curricula, and programs. District schools are closely linked to people's decision to live in North Hampton. Civic leaders should elevate the public schools in any campaign to attract permanent residents. Welcoming messages at points of entry to the city, whether they are physical or virtual, could include information about the schools, their convenient neighborhood locations, teacher quality, and student diversity should be featured because these were identified as important characteristics by many participants. The local Chamber of Commerce should be briefed annually about the school's educational missions, programs, and accomplishments, since a healthy local economy is partly dependent upon people deciding to take up permanent residence in a city or town. District leaders should be alert to the possibility that residents' choice can sort families and students in the same ways that school choice can and provide remedies when that occurs. They should also be attentive to the experiences of parents who have children with special needs, since they generally lack viable educational alternatives to the district schools. Parents' district school enrollment is based on meaningful academic and social-emotional characteristics and rooted in their ideological support for public education as a valuable common good. District leaders should cultivate strong partnerships with parent advocates in the interest of maintaining high-quality, innovative schools with a continuous alignment between families and administrators regarding mission and programs. They should also recognize that parents are treating district schools as part of the local educational marketplace and respond by actively promoting them. Positive messaging should reach parents in their neighborhoods and their social and professional circles. School staff should also be prepared so that family visits are a beneficial experience. Districts can play an important role in teaching parents about the school enrollment process and making them aware of the options available to them. This could also help counteract any student sorting effects of school choice by making sure that all families have access to information about their educational possibilities. Thank you again for this opportunity to share the findings of my research with you and for giving consideration to my recommendations.
Thank you so much for sharing that with us.
Of course.
Are there questions or comments for Julie in addition to thanks? Member Levy? You, you can unmute? Okay. Member Levy needs to... Member Levy needs to, you made it, come over again, perhaps?
Thanks, sorry, my internet kicked me out for a second there. Thank you so, so much for the presentation. It's hugely informative and I think can really, really help us as we are thinking about some of our work ahead as a, as a committee and as a district. I'm curious, you were looking at the choices that families had in terms of school choice, charter schools, other districts. Did you uncover reasons why families were choosing private schools over, over the, the district public schools? Did that come up? Were the reasons, if so, were the reasons any different from, from what you've presented to us?
That, that's a great question. That wasn't part of my study. I was, there, there's a lot of information about why families leave the districts to which they're geographically assigned for private schools, for charter schools, homeschooling. And there isn't much, there's almost no information about the, the decisions made by in-district families. So that was the focus of my study. I did two other studies in the district. One was a case study where I, that was when I was, what, the first study I did in the district was looking, really seeking to understand the trends. And I'm happy to share that information with you for sure. And I will share my, if you want, I'll share my dissertation, and I have a, a lot more information about Northampton and how it's been impacted by choice. One of my favorite tables shows the, how the choices made by families, I've got two actually, that have changed over time. And the private schools that they used to send their children to and the private schools that they send their children now. And certainly charter schools enrollment have taken the, have supplanted some of the private school enrollment. Like, that's in my dissertation as well, which I'm happy to share with you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Member Stein.
Yeah, I wanna echo Member Levy's appreciation for it. It was really insightful and useful for thinking about the work that the district needs to do. And I was struck by, I don't know if it was the seventy-five, the, the high number of folks who had an ideological commitment to public education. And it resonated with me because that's something that I've encountered, but I just didn't assume it was that large. And so that was sort of really nice from my perspective to hear. Because, you know, it is like one of the few remaining large public institutions that haven't been privatized despite the sort of charter incursions. So, yeah, no, I just, it was really helpful and I just really appreciate it. And, and this is not part of your study, but I've tried to keep a little bit with some of the funding changes and the sort of talk and recently about reimbursement rates regarding school choice. I'm wondering if you have, you know, just sort of any sort of thoughts about what you've seen at the state level and, you know, how it might impact us here or how you're thinking about it?
I, I'm, I'm not thinking about it too much because, you know, a lot, lot, there's so much is undecided. There's just not, not a lot of information. I'll come back to that in a second. I wanted, I was very surprised by the ideological support for the public schools. My interviews were, my interview questions were open-ended. I was asking parents to tell me about their school enrollment, about the time that they enrolled their child in school. It was, it was very, you know, it was, they were sharing that story. And I was surprised at how that unprompted, completely unprompted by me, that that came up in that number of interviews. And the characteristics that I used as my survey and that I also used to quantify my qualitative responses, those came from the literature and also from school ratings websites, right? But ideological support for public schools wasn't one of them. So that was really neat. In terms of the, just like the, you know, there's a lot of debate about reimbursement rates for, part, part of my dissertation too is the, how your predecessors in the school committee ultimately came to decide to participate in school choice. And it was, yes, to make up some lost revenue to charter schools, but it was also because the school committee members felt like if these, that people wanted to come to the Northampton Public Schools, we should give families that, that opportunity. The, the, you know, different states have different formulas for reimbursing charter school tuition or not. In some states, charter schools have their own line item in the state budget, and so they're not felt. You know, the charter school enrollment isn't felt at the district level. In our district, that was a different, another study I did. I wanted to learn more about why the district responded the way that it did to school choice. And I learned that the, the mayor at the time kept the cost of charter school tuition on the city side of the budget and not on the school district side of the budget. So school committee members weren't always completely aware of what those costs were. They certainly didn't have to make up the money for the students who had left out of their own budget. And so that was, you know, the mayor was highly praised for doing that. But also it might have insulated the school committee members a little bit from that. And then my last thought, the idea of, you know, that, that, the, when students enroll in charter schools, they don't just get the money from the state, which is a tax, which the inter-district public school choice students do. They also get the local share of funding from the districts, right? So it, it's a higher cost for sure. The, the idea behind that, there were two, you know, one was the competition idea that if it hurts districts financially, they, parents want what's not being offered in a district and their financial costs to the districts for not offering those programs. They'll step up and do that. And in fact, at the high school, you know, many years ago, not long after PVPA was founded, you know, when it was really having a big impact on our district, a lot of money was put into the performing arts programs at the high school. And we, my son reaped the benefits of that, you know, for sure. But the, the, it, it's the funding, it, it's complicated, you know, for sure. Because there are, there, you know, it also seems like it, the other justification for why more money goes to charter schools is because they don't have the physical infrastructure that traditional public schools have, that the states have invested in, you know, through all their funding sources. So that's their justification. But it's, I don't, it's complicated. It's, everybody has different positions on it, and I'm still not sure how I feel.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, that's a long answer.
No, I really appreciate it.
Member Miller.
Again, I just wanna echo the gratitude for this great presentation. It's so helpful and interesting and important to all of us. I guess I had just one quick question, which is, I didn't know if you noticed at all whether there was any data that told you at what point in kids' education were they leaving? Like, did we get a sense of they're leaving in first grade, they're leaving in eighth grade, you know, what? Did you learn anything about that?
That, that wasn't part of my study either, and I absolutely think that the district should track that. I would also advocate for every time a student is enrolled that the, just a few questions are asked the families who are enrolling the children, why they're being enrolled. And we, we absolutely ought to track when families are leaving and why they're, why they're leaving. There should be a, a short exit survey as well, I think would be really helpful.
Absolutely agree. Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Member Goldman.
Yes, thank you again, Dr. Spencer Robinson, for your presentation and for your work. Really appreciate you taking, putting so much effort into our district schools, understanding them better. At the beginning, you were talking about how the balance works out, that we actually are at a loss of about, did you say two million?
At the time of my study, yep, it was a little over two million dollars.
Yeah, and so we know that mostly that is because of the formulas and whatnot, and it's complicated. But it sounds like what we need would be for more of Northampton students to stay in the district to reduce that discrepancy. I'm just wondering if you recommend that or if there's some sort of, what you see might be problematic about that approach? Just sort of your overall view in an approach to, to work with the information you've given us. Although I understand, you just gave us several excellent recommendations.
Thank you. The, in 2016, Abacus Associates did a really comprehensive study of why district families were leaving for charter schools. And so I would definitely ask Dr. Provost for that. He would be happy to share it with you. It probably more information than you wanna read, and some of it is hard to read. For, for me, it was hard to read at the time. But that, that gets at why families are leaving the district. My own sensibility is that we, I was, I used to focus much more on, on families leaving. You know, I think it hurt my professional ego a little bit too, because I, you know, as a, as a public school teacher, I, hang on, I'm just gonna check this, change this for you. As a public school teacher, I just, you know, took so much pride in our schools. And when, it almost felt like kind of a rejection when families left the district. But what I learned, not just through school, my, my studies, but particularly this study, was that families are actively choosing our, the district schools for lots of really sound pedagogical reasons, that our district schools have all kinds of things that cannot be offered, are not offered and can't be offered by charter schools or private schools or in a homeschool kind of setting. Starting to be, starting with, it's an entire district. So one of the, you know, charter schools, private schools, and vocational schools, they're all clear on their missions. And when families enroll children in those types of schools, you can make some real safe assumptions about why they're doing that. The district schools don't have that. It's not, you know, districts, that mission is undefined for district schools. And I think that's a wonderful opportunity for districts to include families especially and educators and of course, led by the district leaders like you all in defining the mission and having, you know, being clear about, about what that is. And districts can, you know, you've got the preschool to twelve offering for students, which is phenomenal. And, you know, private school, private schools, charter schools, vocational schools, they're one school. Compete, you're a district of six, you're a small district. So you can actually do, you know, you can be so, so much more nimble and responsive in a smaller district. Some districts are huge, but just being a district offering that whole menu of educational opportunities to students is something that individual schools don't have. So I would definitely encourage us, you all, to focus on what pulls families into the district, why they're choosing the schools, what, what we're about. I, you know, the, another, another piece I'll, I'll throw out there to consider is what impact school choice has on things like diversity in the district. And in fact, our participation in inter-district school choice diversifies the school. It makes the schools more diverse than they would be if we didn't participate in inter-district public school choice. And that's something that families find appealing about the district schools. And so that's a real plus, but to understand maybe a little bit more of those demographics. But I would certainly, I think it's, you know, it would be a wonderful time to really look at everything that the district schools have to offer, try to become more coherent about it, promote the district schools, and create a strong, strong partnerships with those families, you know, who are actively choosing the district.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Do we have any other questions or comments? I don't see any. So again, our, our deep gratitude, thank you. This was really fascinating and we're so grateful for your work. So thank you so much for presenting it to us, Julie, and, and thank you for your offers to, you know, continue these conversations. So.
Yeah, thank you so much for the opportunity. I really appreciate and all of your work on behalf of this district that provided me with just wonderful, wonderful professional experience and great education for all three of my kids.
Thank you. All right, good night. Okay, school committee, what's your pleasure? Do you wanna finish out new business or go back up to our reports? Anyone have any thoughts? Oh, okay. If, so why don't we finish out new business, except actually, Mem, is Member Rob, Member Robbins, let me check in with you real quick. Do you wanna do your curriculum report?
We actually, we, for our next meeting, it's not till May eighteenth. We did, we're not on the agenda to read out our mission statement, which we were gonna put in for approval, if that's what you're referring to.
I, I was just going down the, all of the different subcommittees. And I just wanted to, in case you were not gonna be here later on, I wanted to make sure that I.
Member Levy's happy to share that and read it, but that was something that we needed to be put out to vote by the committee. So it's the description of what our committee is about that the committee came to resolution. It takes about two minutes, I think.
Sure, I mean, is it okay, that wasn't on the agenda?
It was supposed to be on the agenda. It was bumped last time, and it should have been on this one, I think.
Annie, is that okay if, if it wasn't, if it was just slated for a report and not for, this is for a vote?
It's, we were asked to bring forward a description of that subcommittee, so we created one.
And is it just for information or are we meant to vote on it?
I think you meant to vote on it.
If we're meant to vote on it, then it, then am I right that it needs, that needs to be set on the agenda?
It does. And I apologize, Member Robbins. I didn't realize that that was one of the things that was supposed to be forwarded from the last agenda, so I'll fix that for June, I guess. But I think if it's all right with you, Mayor, Member Robbins could read it just for information purposes.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Well, actually, that's fine. I mean, it can wait till June. There's, it's not a burning issue. Let's, let's move forward if that's okay.
Okay, do you have anything else for the curriculum subcommittee that you wanna report out on or no?
Nope, that's good.
All right, excellent. All right, I know we're jumping around this evening. I'm sorry. Okay, back down to new business. Let's, why don't, may I take a moment to proclaim School Lunch Hero Day? So this is an official proclamation for School Lunch Hero Day. I don't know if it's possible to put it up on the screen real quick, because it's got kind of a cool graphic. So, whereas nutritious meals at school are an essential part of the school day, whereas the staff of the district school meals and nutrition department are committed to providing healthful nutritious meals to the district's children. And whereas the men and women who prepare and serve school meals help nurture our children through their daily interaction and support. Whereas the day of Friday, May sixth, twenty twenty-two, is School Lunch Hero Day. Now, therefore be resolved, the Northampton School District expresses its deep appreciation to these valuable employees and commends their good work on behalf of children. So thank you to our School Lunch Heroes. And next on the agenda is a resolution supporting the Fair Share Amendment. That's sponsored by myself and Member Agna. Member Agna, would you like to read the resolution?
Yes, I would like to. The Northampton School Committee Resolution in Support of the Fair Share Amendment. Whereas Massachusetts needed new revenue for our transportation and public education systems even before the COVID-nineteen pandemic, and long-term funding is now needed, is needed now more than ever to lift our economy into an equitable and long-lasting recovery. And whereas Northampton's Chapter Seventy state school aid has remained stagnant for over twenty years, though required net school spending has steadily increased, with the City of Northampton's general fund making up and far exceeding the difference in support of the Northampton Public Schools, even with the imposed two-point-five percent annual limit on raising property tax revenue. And whereas the two thousand nineteen Student Opportunity Act was passed after the Foundation Budget Review Commission determined that the state's foundation budget formula, which determines state aid to each district, had been underfunding school districts by more than one billion dollars a year for essential educational services. And while that reform was the first significant update to the dysfunctional formula since nineteen ninety-three, it was rightly directed at lower-income districts that rely heavily on Chapter Seventy for required net school spending and has not resulted in an appreciable increase in state aid for the Northampton Public Schools. And whereas additional funding is needed to maintain the progress school, Northampton Public Schools have made over the last ten years in class size, social emotional supports, and in hiring additional teachers and support staff. And whereas major investments in public education are needed. And whereas major investments in public education are needed to help students recover academically, socially, and emotionally from the COVID nineteen pandemic. And whereas the best way to help working families and build a stronger economy for us all is to make sure that we have quality public schools for our children, affordable public higher education, and a reliable transportation system. And whereas students need a well-rounded education founded on a rich and varied curriculum that includes science, technology, engineering, and math STEM, music art and athletics. And whereas new state revenue is necessary to rebuild crumbling roads and bridges, improve our public schools from pre-K through college, invest in fast and reliable public transportation, make public higher education affordable again, and expand opportunities for healthy walking and bicycling. And whereas wealthy Massachusetts residents saw their investments grow during this pandemic, while working families struggled. And Massachusetts wealthiest residents should pay their fair share to support our communities and grow our economies. Therefore, let it be resolved that the Northampton School Committee supports the proposed fair share amendment that would create an additional tax of four percentage points on annual income above one million dollars and dedicate the funds raised by this tax to quality public education, affordable public colleges and universities, and for repair and maintenance of roads, bridges, and public transportation. Therefore, be it further resolved that the clerk of the Northampton School Committee shall send a copy of this resolution to Governor Charles Baker, Attorney General Maura Healy, State Senator Joe Cumberford, State Representative Lindsey Sabodosa, State President Karen Spilka, and House Speaker Ronald Mariano. Thank you.
Thank you. And I I would like to, I would like to thank Andrea Gito who asked that we take up this resolution. Thank you so much for that request. Very, very happy to do so. And I just want to note that the City Council passed a resolution supporting the fair share amendment at their last City Council meeting. So we will be joining them in in fighting for this. Member Seraphie Cox.
Yeah, thank you. I'm incredibly in support of of this resolution and I'm especially excited to support it because, you know, this school committee at our last meeting voted through a budget that was greater than what our city had had put forward for us to to have as a total budget amount. And we did that, you know, several members that that voted in favor of it said that they were doing it in order to show what our schools actually need in order to 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 provide quality education. And so I'm really glad that we're pairing that statement with this statement because it, you know, that high-quality education shouldn't only come on the backs of of increased property taxes. They should absolutely, absolutely come on from a more progressive taxation system. So thank you so much for bringing this.
Thank you. Any other, member Gazy?
Do we need a motion to accept that resolution? And if so, I will make that.
Thank you. Motion to name a member Gazy, I believe, seconded by member Levy, I think, I can't see, but I think I heard. Any further discussion on this resolution? Okay. Seeing none, roll call, please, Annie.
Member Stein.
Yes.
Member Levy.
Yes.
Member Miller.
Yes.
Member Goldman.
Yes.
Member Agna.
Yes.
Member Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Shara.
Yes.
Member Robbins.
Absolutely.
Member Gazy.
Yes.
And member Seraphie Cox.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone, for supporting that. Next, we have a vote to approve calendar of school committee meetings. And I believe Annie gave us both a lost my papers, gave us a subcommittee calendar and sort of a list of the meetings that have happened and meetings to happen. And so I I'm really happy to present this. This was sort of a real surprise to me that the school committee doesn't have a schedule, a regular schedule for subcommittee meetings. I I believe that every other standing committee, subcommittee, multi-member body in, that meets in public in the city has a schedule that is posted and is available for the public so that they can have a reasonable expectation and awareness of when these these bodies meet. You know, this is also something that I think allows members, the participants on these in these meetings to to be able to plan and schedule and and sort of, and to this point, you know, I've had a couple of constituents ask me the day of the month that school subcommittees meet because that's, that's how they're accustomed to dealing with other subcommittee, other subcommittees. So this is something that I'd really like the school committee to consider. I think it's really, really important for transparency for the public. And and so that's my introduction and I'd love to hear your thoughts. Anybody? Member Agna.
I guess I just want clarification. I I think that these were, this was the original schedule that has been used for however many years. Is that, I think, or Annie, you can tell me that.
Good, all right, if I answer this, Mayor?
Please, yeah.
This, every first meeting in January, we vote, the school committee votes on the regular meeting schedule of just school committee meetings. And this is a version where I've put subcommittee meetings in there in the way that over the years I've seen it work best. Just as it falls out or how it used to be in some ways. The first, until now, I think until April, maybe, I I've put in all the, all the subcommittee meetings that we've had. So if you look at February and eight and March, that's a lot of meetings. That's two many, two many meetings for, you know, for administratively, for me to keep up with, for us in the central office to keep up with. So but, you know, these are different, these are unique circumstances, but I would like to see a better rhythm to the subcommittee meetings. And so everything after pretty much June first, except there are a couple of things, I think there's a curriculum subcommittee meeting already posted for that. But after that, we'll follow the recommendations that I gave in that other document where I outline sort of the reasons for having this particular schedule. Some committee meetings, well, there's really only one subcommittee that definitely meets every month, and that's rules and policy. And that's simply because it 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 takes the most, it does the most volume of work, I'll say, and the most volume of administrative work. But, you know, some subcommittee meetings meet just as needed. Some subcommittee meetings meet certain times of the year, some meet every other month. Of course, then there's ad hoc subcommittee meetings and that need to be scheduled on their own. And the way we've been doing it is I've been spending so much of my time just scheduling meetings and not able to get to some really important work like minutes and things like that. So this would be really helpful to me and everybody at the central office.
You bring up a good point. If there's a concern that having a set date and time would mean that a subcommittee must meet even if there isn't something on their agenda or something that they need to meet on. That's not, that's not necessary. So, you know, other elsewhere in the city, if there's not something and and the committee doesn't need to meet, then that meeting just gets canceled. So this doesn't, this doesn't compel you to meet more. It just gives structure to the meetings and helps people plan. Member Seraphie Cox.
Just a, an addition that in the, in the schedule, the curriculum subcommittee meeting and the rules and policies subcommittee meeting are listed for May, but the negotiation subcommittee has a meeting on May sixteenth at five o'clock.
Yes, I know. I I wrote this calendar maybe six weeks ago, so I haven't added that yet and it got, it got postponed from the last meeting. So like I said, especially negotiating is going to be added because it's an as-needed subcommittee. So it's not going to be set in stone. It'll be added into the calendar as we go. And that, that's also ad hoc meetings. That will happen with those as well. But this is just a standardized, a little bit more standardized, so that I'm not spending all my time trying to figure out, you know, trying to schedule meetings. And also, I think for, especially for subcommittee chairs, it's just an easier and a more efficient way to plan the work of the committee over the year. And I would expect that to do this every year and have this voted on in the January meeting.
So I was just, that was a information moment, not anything against it. In fact, it it looks like it is a vote, so I would make a motion to approve the calendar of school committee meetings for twenty twenty-two.
That was seconded by member Gazy, I believe. Member Levy.
Sorry if I'm misreading. The superintendent evaluation subcommittee hasn't yet met in part, I believe, because that is a cyclical work. And the first meeting is in June, but we haven't established the rest of the meetings yet. And I think I just want to note that in passing this, that those are going to need to be added as well.
Yes, and I think that what, the way it's happened with Superintendent Eval in the past, it's three meetings over a course of two years. And at the end of each meeting, the, it's determined, you know, how long it should be before the next meeting. If that makes sense, unless the committee wants to do.
Three meetings over two years?
Yep. We don't want to, we don't want to overevaluate our superintendent.
No, but we do want to, well, okay, well.
Well, I can, I mean, the superintendent can speak to that. It's a process and it's.
It's okay. We don't need to spend time on that, right? Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? To the motion on the floor? Okay, seeing none, roll call, please.
Member Levy.
Yes.
Member Miller.
Yes.
Member Goldman.
Yes.
Member Agna.
Yes.
Member Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Shara.
Yes.
Member Robbins.
Yes.
Member Gazy.
Yes.
Member Seraphie Cox.
Yes.
And member Stein.
Yes.
Thank you all very much.
Thanks for laying that all out, Annie. Okay, next is G, vote to establish a school psychologist internship program with two interns for F Y twenty-three. Is there a motion that will have Dr. Provost present?
I'll make a motion. I'm always good for that.
Motion to approve?
Yes.
Seconded by member Davis. Dr. Provost?
Thank you very much. I should say that this proposal has already been, in essence, approved in the budget. It was embedded within the budget reductions that were presented at the last meeting. So now that the financial piece has been taken care of, let me talk about the conceptual piece. So our goal here is to strengthen our partnership with the School Psychology Program at the University of Massachusetts to offer students a internship year after completing the practicum year. So school psychologists have to do a practicum just like all other licensed staff in the district does. And then in the UMass program, they also have to complete an internship year, which is essentially a minimum of thirty hours a week. It's a essentially almost full-time schedule that staff that interns would follow over the course of the year. During that time, they'd be able to provide support for our school psychologists and be able to learn their craft better by working closely with our school psychologists. They would be able to perform a few assessments a week, which is why we reduce the the line item for independent evaluations provided outside of the district because having interns in place would allow us to have that work done by them. It's not right to have interns provide such a service to the district with no compensation. The rate that UMass suggests is fifteen thousand dollars. And so the proposal is to have two more individuals join our district completing internships at UMass at the rate of fifteen thousand each. We do have a very strong relationship with the UMass School Psych Program. We have several practicum students every year and our goal would be to offer a second year experience for some of the more promising students.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Member Miller, was that a hand? Go ahead.
Would these interns have supervision and would their reports be read by a supervisor?
They would be supervised by our school psychologists. So it would, they can share them to a certain extent. And so we talked about possibly having shared supervision instead of having one school psychologist paired with the individual throughout the year. So that's, there's a little bit of flexibility around that, but it is a requirement that they have supervision from our own school psychologists who would check off their work.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other discussion? Okay, roll call, please, Annie.
Member Miller.
Member Miller, we didn't hear you.
Yes.
Member Goldman.
Yes.
Member Agna.
Yes.
Member Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Shara.
Yes.
Member Robbins.
Yes.
Member Gazy.
Yes.
Member Seraphie Cox.
Yes.
Member Stein.
Yes.
And member Levy.
Yes.
Okay, next is H, vote to exempt trips from NHS or the high school to Child's Park from the approval process under school committee policy I J O A.
Thank you. This is a proposal that I'm recommending in order to increase access and equity to hands-on learning experiences for students, particularly in science classes at the high school. We were approached by members of the science faculty asking if they can, there could be a way to streamline the process of taking students to Child's Park. As you can see from the map, at the end of the the document that supports this, the distance from the high school to the far reaches of Child's Park is approximately a quarter of a mile. That is equidistant from the distance to, from the high school to the end of our athletic fields. The process of going across the street to Child's Park is currently considered a field trip, while going out to the backfields is not considered a field trip. And because it's a field trip, it creates additional paperwork requirements for teachers every time they want to take kids across the street. It also creates equity issues because, as the staff have told me, one of the challenges is getting this multi-page document filled out for all of the students in the class so that they're able to go across the street. And so we did some research to see if there was any way that we could streamline the process for them and found that in the regulation a field trip request is required, or field trip permission is required for any property that is deemed off-school grounds. What was a little bit unclear under the regulation is who has the property to deem something within school grounds? I think probably the most clear and transparent way to do that would be to have the school committee make the declaration. And so my real request here is for you to de- declare for the purposes of field trips, um, the Child's Park area to be on school grounds so that staff who want to take students over there do not have to complete the field trip process for each visit.
Okay, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Um, member Seraphy Cox.
Um, I'll make a motion and then I have a question. Um, I'll move that, uh, to approve, um, the, sorry, do, do you need, can I, can I just, uh, say this item? Because I feel like Superintendent Provost just outlined the, the motion better than I could repeat it.
Sure, is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Member Agna. And what's your question, member?
Um, I was just wondering, Superintendent Provost, if, uh, you have consulted legal counsel on the, um, legal implications of extending school ground to private property?
I have not.
I mean, that would be my only question because Child's Park is not a public, a public park. I mean, it's open to the public, but it's not owned by the public.
Sure.
I don't know, Superintendent Provost, if that gives you pause. It looks like the wheels are turning in your head.
I mean, I, I could bring it back to legal review and then bring it back to the committee. I, I mean, my, my research on this was just basically going through the regulations. I, I do think, you know, we, we have field trips, um, we do have coverage, we have insurance coverage that, um, covers students on field trips. That would be my main, um, concern. I don't have that concern, um, with this because currently we are taking students out there. We're just having them sign the forms first.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a, uh, I think it's a great idea and I love the idea of, of being able to do it. Um, I, and I would, I'm not withdrawing my motion, um, but I would suggest just touching base with Attorney Taylor to make sure that there's no ramifications of declaring that private property is school grounds.
For the purposes of field trips.
Yes.
Okay, any further discussion? Um, so are we going to choose not to vote on this tonight? And bring it to the next meeting?
Uh, I did not withdraw my, my motion. So, uh, I mean, unless Superintendent Provost would prefer to withdraw it, I, I think it's fine to go ahead and, um, vote on it tonight.
All right. Any further discussion on the motion on the floor? Seeing none, roll call please, Annie.
Member Goldman.
Yes.
Member Agna.
Yes.
Member Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Shara.
Yes.
Member Robbins.
Oh, sorry, uh, Member Robbins, um, is, is, uh, needed to, needed to leave the meeting and send her, her apologies.
Okay, it's probably like four o'clock in the morning over there.
I was surprised she lasted as long as she did.
Member Gazy.
Yes.
Member Seraphy Cox.
Yes.
Member Stein.
Yes.
Member Levy.
Yes.
And Member Miller.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Next is an update on the ad hoc late start subcommittee. We got a little update from Member, uh, Goldman earlier, but, uh, Dr. Provost?
And I think that update was quite adequate, just to reiterate. Um, we did meet with Superintendent Morrison and members of the Emmerell Pelham School Committees as well as, uh, members of both school communities to develop a draft survey. And when it comes time for my superintendent's report, I'll give you a sneak peek at what it looks like.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Um, okay, so let's go back up to what we haven't done yet, which is under reports. So, uh, first up, rules and policy. Member Gazy, you have a few items for us, yes?
Yes, um, I do. I was, uh, wanting to, get a second reading and vote on the rules of procedure that we worked on. Uh, ACAB, the sexual harassment one, and BDB, the school committee officers. And then I have several to, um, bring to the committee for the first thing after that. I don't know how you want to proceed on that. Um, when we, we took a lot of the mask policy, uh, suggested policies, uh, their advice. And, um, if you look in your packets, you can see where we proposed changes. I believe they're highlighted or notated. Uh, there's not a lot of them. Um, and so I'm ready to hear any discussion.
Okay, so did, uh, which ones did you want to do first? You want to do the second readings and votes first?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so first up, uh, rules of procedure.
Yes.
Um, do you want to discuss them individually or do we want to take them as a group?
Uh, it depends on how much you trust us, I guess. We worked long and hard on this and, you know, it was a collaborative effort. Um, and we took the best advice of mask and most of the changes that we made were sort of, um, technical ones, I think. So if I assume you had a look.
So just to clarify, we're talking rules of procedure, ACAB and BDB? First, these are the second readings and vote? Okay.
And Emily, did you have more to say on that? Because you were there.
I was just going to make a motion.
Oh, yay. Let's move it on.
Um, I would, uh, make a motion to approve, uh, the, um, policies and rules of procedure. Um, rules of procedure, ACAB and BDB, um, as presented in our packet.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Member Miller. Um, Member Levy.
Thanks for all your work on this, folks. Um, on the, the rules of procedure, there's a comment. Um, I'm just curious about it. It's a section 11.1, evaluation. Superintendent's final written annual evaluation will consider input from all members of the school committee and other stakeholders using a formal process to capture members' feedback. And then it says, Holly is to ask the school committee about this suggestion. And I was just wondering if you could let us know if you need a suggestion about that, or if that's just an old comment and needs to be resolved.
I have grandchildren running around trying to get them in bed and so I lost the process there when you were reading. So is this on the rules of procedure that you had the question or?
Yeah, it's under 11.1. There's just a, you've got a, a highlighted sentence and it says you needed to get feedback from the, the school committee. And I wasn't sure if this was your, when you were going to do that.
We just wanted to know whether you agreed with that.
I do.
Yeah.
Uh.
You know, that was just one area that we thought, um, if anybody, you know, the other ones were like changing website names and changing the name from executive secretary to clerk. This was something a little bit more substantial. So that's why I just highlighted it to bring it to your attention.
Thanks. Yeah, I'm all for it and would even push for stronger language to ensure that it's taken in, that it's an active part. But I think, I think having that language there is great. Thank you. That's, that was my only comment and question.
Okay, thanks.
Um, can I ask, so a question under, um, meeting, so 14.2, this is around public comments. Um, so there'll be time for the public to address the committee, time per speaker will be at the discretion of the chair. But then 14.3 says during the public session of the meeting, discussion by the public will be limited to three minutes per person per issue at the discretion of the chair. So it's just at minimum, it's redundant. Um, but it, what's, what's the pleasure? That it be three minutes or that it's at the discretion?
Um, I, my recollection is that we were intending for it to be three minutes per speaker or at the discretion of the chair, that, that, um, of course, there are times when if there's 200 people that want to speak, you may need to decrease that to two minutes. Um, and I thought that it was more clear when we were editing it. So, um, let me look back at, at my notes from that meeting to see if maybe I can find a, a more clear version. But that was, I believe, the spirit.
Other questions or comments?
We could always make it so that, you know, in parentheses, there's three minutes when you say the, instead of the 15.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would say that if, um, under 14.2, if, if you just took that, if you took out time per speaker will be out again. So it's just, that's addressing the, the total time for public comment. And then 14.3 is about the time per person. It's already in there and it already says at the discretion of the chair. So that would eliminate the redundancy and maybe be less confusing.
Oh, yeah, so.
I see what you're saying, yeah.
So there will be, so it would read, there will be time for the public to address the committee. And then the next one, and it just ends right there. Right?
Um, I mean, you could leave at the discretion of the chair if you want to say that, you know, how long that time is, is at the discretion. It's just you're, you're removing the time per from that section because it's in the following section.
Yeah.
Member, um, Member Stein, do you want to say something while they're working on that?
Yeah, this is, um, this is related, but it's for 14.3 and it's the, um, the per person per issue. And I'd, I'm wondering if the, I mean, this is existing, right? I don't, this hasn't been changed. But I'm wondering if, if it's the policy currently, like, how do we read this? Like, so could someone have three minutes on each new agenda item? Or do they only have three minutes total? Right? It sort of seems a bit ambiguous there to have three minutes per person per issue.
I think that's a good point. Also, I don't think, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think we say anywhere here that, that the public can only speak to items on the agenda. So to your point, Member Stein, issues are infinite.
Yeah, so I would revise my motion to, um, to pass these with revisions to the rules and policy to take out that time per speaker will be section uh, in 14.2 and to just take out the per issue in 14.3. Because that is our current practice. It's just three minutes per person.
Um, Member Stein, did you have something else?
No, I'm sorry. I meant to put the hand down.
It's okay. Member Levy?
Sorry, I don't mean to belabor this. I, um, I just want to make sure there's transparency that it, that even though it's at the, I just want to, can you say, Member Seraphy Cox? What is it that you're suggesting gets taken out again?
In 14.2,
Yep.
um, that the last sentence would read, there will be time for the public to address the committee at the discretion of the chair. And then in 14.3, it outlines what that looks like, but we take out the per issue from that.
Perfect, okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Will be done.
And so that I can get it clear, in 14.3, we take out per person per issue or not per person, just per issue. Okay.
Yeah, and leave in per person because it's three minutes per person.
Okay.
Okay, is that how, is that look good? There will be time for the public to address the committee at the discretion of the chair and then limited to three.
Um, 14.2 still needs a little work, but we trust you.
Okay, Emily. Make a note. Or else try to put it in the shape that it was because I am having editing problems.
I've got the notes.
Oh, good. Good, thank you.
Okay, any, any further discussion on the rules of procedure? Um, okay, so I think we're working on these individually. Uh, roll call please. Annie.
Uh, was it, I think the, the motion was for both the policies and the rules of procedure. Am I right, Member Seraphy Cox?
Oh, was that right? Okay, apologies. Okay, so we've moved on. We've done that one. Let's move on to, uh, ACAB. And any?
So ACAB, uh, is a policy about prohibiting, um, sexual harassment and other forms of harassment and discrimination. And, uh, Member Gazy, it looks like you are perhaps available again.
Yes, as long as I figure out how to work my computer. Hold on, granddad just can't get together to get them in bed. Um, this one was, again, mostly, uh, we're talking about ACAB, right?
Yes.
And this one was pretty, it had been worked on by, uh, um, I'm having a senior moment here. Um, our attorney.
Attorney Taylor.
Yeah, about, uh, she had done extensive work on it and we just took in, there wasn't a lot of changes to be made when we looked at the, um, at the recent, uh, changes that mask had suggested.
So it looks like there's maybe, is, is what's highlighted an addition?
Yes.
So what's highlighted is, is first sentence where bigotry and intolerance are not accepted. Is that in a, an addition or a change somehow? Is that why it's highlighted?
I believe it's an addition.
Okay, thank you.
And that came from some of our policy work, you know, so the attorney Taylor had done.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion on this addition? Okay, I don't see any. So we can move on to BDB, school, uh, committee officers.
It was, uh, pretty, um, straightforward. We only had that all answer parliamentary inquiries.
Um, I see, and it, is this also an addition down under clerk?
Oh, I forgot that. Oh, I forgot that. Yes.
And what was the other thing that you mentioned? I don't see another highlighted bit, was there another?
There was a little, I'm looking for it now, because I just saw it. Number seven, as presiding officer, the chair will answer parliamentary questions, we just took out.
Oh, okay, I do see that now, thank you. Um, okay, and so, and then under clerk, the addition is where video recordings exist to the meetings summarized in the minutes. Links to the video recordings will be included in the minutes.
Okay, and that was, I believe, a recommendation from mask.
Okay. Any discussion on those changes? I don't see any, so I think we can go ahead and take a roll call, oh, sorry, member Stein.
This is just one question, I I I don't know, I don't know where if there's a different policy it would go in, but no, no, it would go in a different policy. Forgive me, thank you.
Okay, so we can take a roll call on these three policies or the rules of procedure in these two policies as a group, please. Member Agna.
Yes.
Member Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Shara.
Yes.
Member Robbins is not possessed now, member Geezy.
Yes.
Member Seraphy Cox.
Yes.
Member Stein.
Yes.
Member Levy.
Yes.
Member Miller.
Yes.
And member Goldman.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And so we're moving on to the ones that are on first reading. So the first, first one is ADDA query requirements.
Correct. Um, and this is the part where you don't ask questions, right? You just I mean, we don't discuss them, we just sort of list them out, correct?
I'm seeing a nod from.
Thanks, you're going for first reading, I'm still hobby on this.
That, it seems like that is correct. So this is different how I've done first readings before, so member Seraphy Cox, so this is so member Geezy is just going to go through what these changes are, and we don't deliberate or vote, we just take in. Okey dokey.
Right, and I'm trying to get these up, because I had so many tabs open that now I can't find them. School committee. Oh, God. Emily, if you've got this on while I dig through my files again, my drive. No laughing.
No, I'm 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 laughing because it's the age old problem of having too many tabs.
Do you want me to read what the change is?
I I almost have it up. Uh, I'm just three sixteen rules and policy, there's so many little thingy dingies, and I'm such an old dinosaur. Okay, so ADA, ADDA. Query requirements. And I'm pretty sure that
So ADDA was at the April twelfth meeting that we edited that one.
Yes.
And there was a lot of very old language in the old policy. It was adopted in two thousand five. I know that there was the internet then, but a lot of the things that were listed were were quite antiquated. So the additions are, we we just took the new MASC policy and then made our own additions that are underlined.
And Superintendent Provost, Dr. Provost sort of gave us a little schooling about how how queries are, who gets to look at queries, and perhaps you could speak to that.
Sure, so this policy explains how background checks are conducted in the district. Who is required to have a background check, what type of background checks are done for different classes of people who may come in contact with students, whether they're volunteers or whether they're employees, or whether they're contractors. It talks about the factors that go into making a determination of suitability, if something should show up on a query. And it also talks about how confidentiality is provided around the results of confidence of the query checks and federal background checks.
Okay, then moving on to ACR. There was just a little rewording in what the school committee commits to on line two. And then there was a whole section added straight from mask that's highlighted in yellow. And
Well, and ACR is, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Uh, ACR is a completely new policy.
Oh.
For us, is that correct? That's what I have written down.
Yeah. Harassment and retaliation. And so it was really pretty much adopted. Although I am still confused about whether AC nondiscrimination, ACR means AC revised, right? Is that what the R stands for?
No, it doesn't, it's not revised, I think it may be regulation, I I can see if I can look that up. But AC still exists as a policy. And ACR will be a new piece that goes underneath AC.
So that's the AC discrimination. Nondiscrimination.
Correct.
Oh, man. So, there it is. Read it and wait.
Okay.
And then the last one is
Before, wait, before we move on, we've got a couple of hands, member Stein.
I wasn't even looking at that.
Um, I I have a very ignorant question, which is, I don't really understand first reads and second reads. So I just didn't know if more experienced members of the chair could kind of give us new members education on on this, that would be great.
Sure, member Seraphy Cox, would you like to, since I I also am a little bit confused as to the point of the first reads, but love to know.
First reads and second reads predated my extensive term on the on the school committee. In the past, we had done the first read in order to get feedback from the school committee, and then the second read was where we ultimately passed it. And the idea was that then we'd get the feedback in the first read, and then the second read would just pass, because we had already gotten feedback. What ended up happening is that both times there would be feedback, and it just got very arduous. So in order to decrease that amount of time, uh, we were moving to more of a like first read of, let's just walk you through what we did. And then on the second read, if you, you can come to the next meeting when we do the second read with any revisions, you know, ideally written down and specific that you would like to to see in the policy.
Thank you. So, do you have anything more, member Stein, to ask on that?
Member, member Levy has.
Thanks, I just would love to better understand how ACR is, is ACR replacing something that we already had in place? I mean, we do have policies on discrimination and harassment, and so what, how is this differ complement or?
Good question. Ask the man there.
Yes, Dr. Provost.
It does not replace AC, it just becomes an add-on to AC. So there's some definitions here that maybe not part of the core policy. It identifies some reporting procedures, or specifically identifies like in individuals within the district and their telephone numbers. So it's, it's kind of like an endowment to policy AC.
Okay, so I I, thank you. One of the things that I am concerned about is the definition of discrimination. Is that something that's coming from MASC?
Yes, this is, this model policy is almost word for word from MASC, except are we included our own information about telephone numbers and individuals to contact?
Okay. Like, yeah, very concerned about that definition, but I, obviously, if it's coming from MASC, then it has ideally been tried and it's been passed because it works for I, this is just, to me, that's not what discrimination is, that might be harassment, but discrimination and harassment aren't the same thing. And so I I don't necessarily want us as a district to have our definition of discrimination that's separate from what is coming from MASC, but this, I'm trying not to laugh, but this this definition is really not a good one. So I I would, um, I I'm not really sure what to do with that, other than I'm happy to help reword it, but again, I don't know if the committee wants to reword wording from MASC. I'm just curious what others, think about that, and then if you want me to help, I'm happy to, but if you want to leave it, we can, but I might keep thinking about that.
Doctor Provost, did?
Since it is a, a policy that sits under AC, I think maybe the best thing to do would be to try to harmonize the language with a, with the definitions that are in the core policy AC. So we could take a look at both of them when we finally vote on this.
Like the way you put that harmonized.
Yeah, I'm writing it down.
Member Stein?
Yeah, I would, if I understood, member Seraphy Cox correctly, like in, you know, I would just encourage number Levy to maybe send some suggestions on changes that they could then use when they think about harmonizing the entire document. That some of that conversation may be able to happen at the subcommittee meeting, and then we benefit from that when it comes back for that second read. You know, obviously entirely up to your discretion, but I I think MASC is a good place to start, but I tend to agree with you about this not really being a a sterling example that we want to just keep without tinkering with, so yeah, just a suggestion, or actually a request for us.
Yeah, I I think to Dr. Provost's comment, I would, I would, and obviously don't have it in front of me right now, I would want to see what the definition is in AC, because maybe that one's just fine.
Well, I would love to have your input when we get down to it.
Member Seraphy Cox?
Um, I just looked at a policy AC, and it does not have a definition. It implicitly defines discrimination, but not explicitly. But it does not define harassment, so I reiterate that that would be great. Also, um, we passed a slight revision to policy AC at last month's meeting. So, um, so we just reviewed that one, is what I'm saying, and this one was just a new policy, a new policy that was supposed to complement it. But, yeah, so I think, at least from my perspective, the 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 process that would work best would be for, you know, maybe you to come with some specific language, you know, or to work with member Geezy to, to to come back to next month's meeting with some revisions, because yeah, that's, now that I'm reading it through your eyes, that's, it is pretty laughable. Thanks for highlighting that.
Member Miller?
When I'm reading it, it, it's, it, it doesn't, it describes to me harassment, but discrimination is something completely different, that's not in that paragraph. I would want to be able to suggest revisions, but that's my initial comment, is that it describes harassment, but it does not describe discrimination.
Okay, sounds like we'll be moving towards creating our own definition to add to that. Okay. Are we on to BDE?
Yes, the last one is BDE. And this one was mostly, we had to add a couple of subcommittees, the curriculum and the negotiating one. We just cleaned up the language on when the election should be. And does, we have to add, add on, obviously, parts on the curriculum committee and negotiations in the descriptions for the responsibilities.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? On BDE? All right, I don't, oh, sorry, member Stein.
Um, part, this is a question that, you know, tonight we were, we didn't hear sort of the mission statement or charge of the curriculum committee, but I'm noticing here that this might be some version of that. So I'm just in terms of timing, will this return to us, like, sort of after that other sort of statement about the committee is talked about, or?
Uh, yeah, member Seraphy Cox, or?
I mean, it looks like Superintendent Provost was raising his hand as well, but I was just gonna say, the intent, our understanding was that the curriculum subcommittee's description was going to be approved tonight, and therefore could be added for next month's meeting. Um, so presumably it will be on next month's meeting, and then we can add it in at that time.
Thanks.
Okay, anything more on these first readings? I don't see any, so, okay, thank you, member Geezy, for that. Okay, moving on to budget and property, member Goldman, do you have a report?
No, I have no update at this time, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, superintendent evaluation, member Levy, I feel like we talked about this briefly before. No?
Yes, I'm also not necessarily the spokesperson for this group of people. We meet in June.
I'm gonna still, I'm gonna keep on calling on you until this happens, understand, apologies. Um, okay, Nick, we are up to the business administrator report.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, everyone. Um, my May uh, my May business administrator report, um, in your packet, you have a few documents as usual, um, including the FY22 appropriation report, which um, is our just our monthly expenditure report on our local budget um, through April 30th. Um, at this time, we've begun our end of year closing processes. Um, so you will see the deficits in various accounts begin to disappear as we do transfers. Um, at our June school committee meeting, I will request permission to make all necessary transfers in order to um, close the year. Uh, many of these transfers will be greater than $10,000, uh, which, as you know, requires school committee approval to do. Um, but the the way in which one has to do the end of the year closing process that you can't know all the transfers that you have to make until the year is actually over. Um, so, you know, traditionally, um, business administrators have um, asked permission of the committee to um, be able to do transfers to in order to complete that process. Um, even though some will will be over $10,000. Uh, item number two on my report this month, um, I wanted to inform the committee that we were recently awarded a one-time assistance grant from DESI uh, in the amount of $10,755. Um, this aid was distributed to districts that experienced, quote, pandemic-related disruptions in their enrollment. Um, I had no idea this money was coming. Um, honestly, I got an email about it during April vacation and a couple of days later, the treasurer reached out saying, what is this? But anyway, this aid was, um, it's considered a grant and is not in addition to our local budget. Um, the money will be used to cover some of the unexpected expenses that have come up during this year. Um, as you know, there have been many. Um, for gifts under $1,000 this month, um, we were, uh, there was a total of $2,918 in donations um, during the month since our last meeting. Um, all of these donations were were under $1,000. They they just added up to that total of 2918. Um, and all of them were given in support of the mural project at JFK and NHS that um, member Davis had spoken of earlier um, this evening, um, which I certainly do want to go see now that I know it's it's um, getting close to its completion. Um, and then the last uh, piece of my report for this month is you have the um, two copies of the bill warrants that member Agna approved um, during the month of April. So, um, that's my business report for the month of, uh, well, for month of May. Um, and I can move right into the personnel report if if you'd like. Um, in, excuse me, April, there were four new hires. Um, there were seven separations and one transfer um, of uh, an employee from one position to another. Um, our demographics of this um, looked like uh, 87% of our employees that separated were female, 14.3% were male, 71.4% were Caucasian, 14.3% identified as both being Hispanic and white, uh, and 14.3% identified as being both black and white. Um, for the year, we're now at the 66 separations. Uh, 77.3% of them being female, 21.2% of them male, 1.5% non-binary. 83.3% of employees who separated were Caucasian, 4.5% Asian, 4.5% Hispanic, 3% Black, 3% uh, identified as both being Hispanic and white, and 1.5% identified as being both black and white. Um, for vacancies currently, at Bridge Street School, we still have a one-to-one RN position vacant um, as well as an ESP. Uh, at Leeds, we have one ESP vacancy. At JFK, we have a .5 FTEPE teacher vacancy, um, a math interventionist vacancy, um, along with six ESP vacancies. Um, at Northampton High School, we have a the school psychologist position is still vacant. We have one ESP vacancy, um, as well as two custodians. Um, and then for district-wide positions, we have a vacant floating custodian position, um, as well as one crossing guard. Um, so that's my personnel report for this month.
Sorry, I see a couple hands. Member Sarah P. Cox. You, oh, hold on, you can unmute.
Thank you. Um, I um, noticed in the personnel report um, that there were three um, separations from one program uh, at Bridge Street School. Um, that program, of course, also is related to uh, an MOA that this body passed last month. So just wondering if you could speak to um, anything related to that.
I I don't really know why any of the folks from um, that particular program separated. Uh, well, actually, two of the three of them I don't. The other one, I believe, took a job as a lead pre-K teacher somewhere else. I'm not sure where. But I I don't have any further information on why any of the other folks um, left that program during the month of of April.
Okay, well, um, I mean, I've been in communication with uh, with John and Annie about getting that MOA moved forward. So, um, uh, would love to see that happen.
Uh, member Levy.
Thanks. Can you help me with the math? I was starting to do it and then it's a little too late for me to do it successfully. Can you add together then the percentages of the people of color who have left the district in this report?
Uh, yeah, give me one second. Um, uh, would you like me to include um, folks that identify as being more than one race?
I would, please, thank you.
All right, well, it would be um, just a 100% minus 83 uh, point three. So you're looking at
17%.
16 point, yeah, 16.7% would be um, individuals of color.
Okay, thanks. And do we know what is the percentage of individuals of color who work in our district?
It is lower than that. I off the top of my head, I don't know. I'm gonna need to look on the DESI website. Um, but I can, um, I can get back to you on that if you would like, number Levy.
I would, and I think um, I this is something I've asked for before, but I just want to reiterate that to me, I appreciate hearing the numbers. But unless we can compare those numbers to the current populations of our district, they're not as helpful to me. But I am really concerned that that in doing that quick math, I felt nervous that that number is substantially higher than our number of folks of color who work in the district. And if we are losing people of color at higher rates, that's a red flag and something that we need to be addressing and understanding why. And uh, doing the exit interviews that we've been talking about, but also um, putting in place measures to ensure that that's not happening. And to me, that may speak. I don't know if um, and and equity audit would get at that as much as it's really looking at the experiences of our students. But I know there's current surveys out there about why people are potentially leaving the district. And I hope that we are different, that we're collecting demographic data of people and that we're going to be able to parse it out by demographics as well, because if we're losing people of color at higher rates, we need to be addressing that.
While you were, um, while you were just speaking, I did open up, um, what I needed to. I found that 10.54% of our district employees um, are individuals of of color. So the rate at which uh, folks of color are leaving is higher than um, the district um, data.
Significantly. That's really troubling to me.
I'm sorry, uh, Nick, can you say that number just one with the points, you know, da-da-da point, blah, blah, blah. It it like flies in and out of my head. Can you say it just one more time?
Uh, yes, 10.54% of our um, staff members are individuals of color and um, 16.7% of people who have separated this year um, are individuals of color.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions for Nick? I don't see any, although I can't see all school committees. They're all bouncing around. Oh, member Stein. Oh, you're muted, member Stein.
Apologies. Um, I had a question, just follow up on on what you were all just discussing. Um, I'm I'm similarly concerned and I'm wondering, um, and I'm not expecting you to have this answer, Nick, or you you might not be even the person to get, you know, to pull it together. But I'm wondering if there's a way in which we um, can look more deeply at that statistic, uh, meaning like by job type, like like by all a number of factors, how can we look more at that? Um, both the percentage of of folks of color in our staff and that percentage that's leaving, like, can we look at it in a way that gives us more granularity around um, job type, school, like like something that can give us some more things to to think about than um, just those those blunt numbers. So we might get some a sense behind it. Um, I don't know where we would find that. Um, but I'm wondering if you had a any ideas.
I can, I I haven't kept specific um, data on on those points. I mean, I can tell you that we've had more ESPs separate from um, the district than any other position during the course of the year. Um, but in terms of of school trends or even, you know, programs within school trends, I I have not done that. I mean, it's certainly doable. It's just a matter of adding the, you know, the extra data points to the, you know, what I'm already keeping. It's certainly doable.
I mean, if it's possible for that to be put together, that would be really, it'd be valuable. So I I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
Thanks.
Sure.
Okay, if there are no other questions on next reports, uh, we'll move on to Dr. Provost Superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. And I have to do the correct screen share because um, no, I don't know how to do it. I do have a video coming up. Can someone remind me how to um, screen share so the sound comes through?
Oh, there's a little box to check when you when you go to hit share screen, there'll be a little box on the bottom left that says share audio. Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. I'd like to begin by commending Northampton High School students Caroline Cooper, Amelia Ritt, and Lily Shipmack for being chosen to showcase the work our district is doing to encourage composting at a recent Massachusetts Farmer's School Conference. Thank you for representing yourselves and your school proudly on this stage. You make us all very proud of the work you're doing in the district. We're partnering with Self Evident Education um, to make a first of its kind uh, opportunity available for our community. I want to just share a short video about that and then I'll talk a little bit more about the event.
Hey, my name's Who Smokey Power Green.
And my name's Michael Lawrence Riddell, and I'm the executive director of Self Evident Education. And Self Evident Education in conjunction with Dr. Power Green and the Northampton Arts Council is organizing the Power of Truths Conference for June 10th and 11th in Florence, Massachusetts. And we'd love to see you there. Yo, Florence has been a place where activists, um, going way back to 19th century have really found a space where they could share ideas, try to build new institutions. Um, at the Power of Truth Conference, we're gonna learn about history, we're gonna connect with educators and bring artists together uh, in order to help under that people understand better uh, the ways in which artists, activists, and educators can come together uh, to understand social justice issues uh, in our nation today. We really hope that the Power of Truths Conference is a place where we can come together in community to start building a just future now. For more information, you can check out northhamptonartscouncil.org or selfevidenteducation.com. Again, that's June 10th and 11th, the Power of Truths. We hope to see you there.
And I'm I'm here to announce tonight that I've been coordinating and negotiating with the Power of Truths organizers to make a block of tickets available to our staff, students, and families. Um, so we are uh, purchasing a sizable block, which I think will make it possible for any members of our school community who want to attend the event to uh, do so free of charge. Uh, I thank them for the discounts they've offered us based on volume purchases. And I really want to encourage um, not only students and staff, but also family members to check out the Power of Truth, because the sessions are quite compelling. Next, I want to give an update on some indicators around our district improvement plan. Uh, because we have some additional data to share about our key metrics for measuring success of our efforts with respect to goal four. As a reminder, we had set a goal of increasing the percentage of Hispanic or Latino students meter exceeding expectations on the third grade ELA MCAS test from 16 uh, percent as it was in 19, in 2019 to 30% by 2024, and increasing the percentage of white third graders meeting or exceeding the expectation is 65%. When we received our results of last year's MCAS, we realized we'd already met the goal with 71% and 31% of those subgroups meeting or exceeding expectations respectively. So there's a check mark in that box and our goal is to keep it checked. Those percentages both exceeded statewide averages for their subgroups. We also met or exceeded the statewide averages for multiracial students, students with high needs, students who are learning English, and students with disabilities, as well as students without disabilities, as well as economically disadvantaged students and non-economically disadvantaged students. In other words, students did well across the board on our standard two indicator. At this time, I can also report on progress toward meeting increasing graduation rates, which is the fourth metric listed here, and increasing early literacy and numeracy scores numeracy scores for Hispanic and Latino students, which is the first metric. So this is uh, year-to-year changes in our graduation rate. This is um, this is a five-year graduation rate, so it runs two years behind our our current year. Uh, as a reminder, the goal here was to increase the five-year graduation rate for Hispanic or Latino students to at least 90% over the next three years and to increase the overall graduation rate to 95%. After just one year of implementation, we are well on the way um, to meeting that goal. Um, it we're really just a percent or two away. Um, so I'd like to celebrate everyone at NHS who's been working so hard to boost graduation rates for all students, especially those who have been less well-served historically. And with two more years to go, I'm certain that we're going to meet that metric. The goal uh, for our early literacy and numeracy measures was to close the gap between the percentage of Hispanic and Latino students scoring above the 25th national percentile, which is to cut score for concerns about potential learning problems and the percentage of white students in the same band. Here, uh, we're looking at the early literacy measures. We're looking at two measures. Um, letter naming fluency and letter sounds fluency. In this uh, graph, the blue lines represent uh, performance of white students on those two measures over two years. And the purple lines represent measures of Hispanic and Latino students over two years. So there's a lot of good news here on all four measures, which you'll see um, that there was improvement for students in both racial and ethnic subgroups. The only downside to the data is that performance improvements for both groups were similar in the first year, which means the gaps between the two groups remained relatively the same. So I've begun a conversation with administrators about what could be done to So I've begun a conversation with administrators about what could be done to further accelerate gains for Hispanic and Latino students as your young students is a, uh, test that's given in kindergarten. So they can actually narrow the gap so that the, really the goal here is to make sure that the progress that, um, Hispanic and Latino students are making is not just linear, but geometric. Um, and here you can see.
Um, sorry, Dr. Provost, Member Seraphie Cox, do you have a question on a slide that's we're on now that you want to ask?
Um, no, it's a previous slide. So, um, this superintendent can finish his presentation and we can go back.
Okay, sorry to interrupt.
That's okay.
Sorry, there was one other thing is that, um, we can't see the bottom of these graphs. I don't know if maybe it's zoomed in too much or something.
Okay, whoops. I don't know if I can pull that out, but I can tell you they represent two years. So you're looking, the first year on this line is, uh, two thousand and twenty, so that would have been the, I'm sorry. Yeah, two thousand twenty-one, which would have been the baseline year, and then winter of twenty-two, which is the, the year that we just had. So you see the baseline and you see the first year of implementation under the district improvement plan. Um, so thank you for that question. I don't know why, uh, it may have something to do with translation through Zoom. Next, uh, wanted to just once again give a shout out to our Grand Spoon Excellence in Teaching Award winners. This, uh, event took place last Wednesday night. It was the first time it was in-person in the COVID era. And so once again, our, uh, winners from Northampton this year were Nisa Shardle, Rebecca Herskowitz, Haley Pearl, and Sarah Churchill Windsor. Um, so congratulations one last time to our winners. It was a great night. Uh, also, as we've mentioned a couple of times already, the late start survey is coming. Here's a, um, here's a look at what that, what that will look like. When you see it, we'll be meeting again with our colleagues to, um, share a draft and to, um, plan a, a communication strategy about getting this out to the community. And then, um, finally, I would also just like to, since we're in the, the mode of proclamations, um, read a little bit from the governor's proclamation, uh, about Nurses Day, which was yesterday. There's a, a small portion of this whereas section that I think, um, is a excellent job description of what nurses have been doing for us. I saw that Lisa was on the call earlier. I, um, also saw that Karen was on the call earlier, so, uh, this is for you two. Whereas school nurses have served a critical role in improving public health and ensuring students' academic success for more than a hundred years. And whereas school nurses address the home and community factors, i.e. social determinate determinants that impact students' health and health by promoting wellness and improving health outcomes for our nation's children. And whereas school nurses support the health and education success of children and youth by providing, by providing access and care when children's cognitive development is at its peak. And whereas school nurses are members of school-based teams, i.e. health services, five oh four, IEP disaster, emergency planning to address school populations. And whereas nurses understand the link between health and learning and are in our position to make positive difference for children every day. And whereas school nurses should be celebrated for their efforts in meeting the needs of today's students by improving the delivery of healthcare in our schools. And whereas school nurses contribute to our local communities by helping students stay healthy in school and ready to learn and keeping parents and guardians at work and not just this school year, but every day. It's important to remember throughout the year, um, and really honor the work that our school nurses do for us. And for the last two years, they've been doing exceptional work, keeping us all safe. So, um, this is a day late, but, um, to all the school nurses, thank you for what you're doing. Okay, so that is my report. I'll stop the share. And take any questions anyone has.
Okay, excellent. Thank you so much for that report. Um, and congratulations on the amazing, uh, work forward, yeah, movement forward on the district improvement plan. Um, it's always remarkable to hear how, how, uh, well we are progressing. Um, Member Seraphie Cox.
Yeah, thanks. Um, my, my question, uh, piggybacks on, um, what, um, Mayor Sierra was just talking about in terms of gains in the, um, district improvement plan. Um, as you said, um, Superintendent Provost, you know, um, you have the, you put a check mark there in that box, um, and that's, that's great to see that, um, number be realized. Of course, my assumption is that you not only, you said our goal is to keep it checked. My assumption is that your goal isn't just to keep it checked, but to continue to, um, uh, improve that number. So I'm wondering what the process is, uh, when a goal is met early, uh, in a district improvement plan? Is there a process for them revising that goal, uh, more, you know, uh, to, to continue to improve on it?
Well, it certainly will be a, a goal of ours to continue to improve on that because, uh, the accountability system in the state basically requires you to make increased achievement each year. So we will be, um, monitoring that and, and working to continue to move that forward. I think, you know, we had set this out as an ambitious goal at, at the beginning of the district improvement plan. And so I think, um, it's important to celebrate the success and, you know, not just keep moving the, the, the goalposts. I know one of the things that is most frustrating about the state accountability system is every time you reach a goal, then the goal gets pushed farther down the road. Um, so we will continue doing that. Obviously, there are still gaps there. You know, it is still, um, quite a gap, but it also does represent, um, a more than doubling of literacy achievement for Hispanic and Latino students, which is actually what we saw in our data for the kindergartners as well. Um, so when I was talking about having geometric progression rather than linear progression, my, my thought is, can we keep doubling that every year or getting as close to doubling that every year? Um, because that's how we'll really close down the gap.
So what I'm hearing you say is that there's not a process to revise the, uh, district improvement plan to, to change that goal, to, you know, revise it to say, this was our initial goal, we achieved it, five exclamation points, and now.
Well, I think what I'd like to do is keep reporting on that. But I mean, I mean, you could create a system where if you keep uh, setting higher targets every time you hit a target, you'll ensure that you never are successful with your improvement plan, you know, so I don't want to do that.
I'm not, I'm not saying that then you wouldn't be successful. It's like, um, instead of getting the A, it's the A plus. Oh, I'm sorry. No, it's no longer A's. Um, but I think you get my point that it's like icing on the cake. Um, but it's not icing on the cake, of course, because it's overcoming deep, deep, uh, structural, educational inequalities. So of course, it's not just fluff, but, um.
Yeah, I know what you're saying. So, so what I'm saying is, we will get new targets set based on the achievement that we attained this year from the state. And what I would do is like to keep reporting out on that and whether we're continuing to meet those targets or hopefully exceed those targets.
Okay. And then, you know, in the reporting on your progress on the district improvement plan, it is then about reporting not just a check mark, but, you know, can, uh, continued improvement that, that hopefully you would see.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for Dr. Provost, Member Stein?
Yeah, um, this is somewhat related and, and I have, uh, I had a similar question that, that, uh, Member Seraphie Cox said, and it's, you know, I, I guess I'm wondering from your perspective, Dr. Provost, is, was the original goal that was set like too low or what was, would we really over succeed in ways that we didn't expect? Like, you know, so, you know, it's hard to project out over five years or at a, over a four year or whatever the period of time is going to be exactly how the payoff for an intervention is going to be. But I'm wondering if you could say a little bit about that, I guess reflecting on the success that we have had in this area.
Yeah, um, so I'll go back to what I said about those, uh, third grade literacy achievement scores last year. We, to use a sports metaphor, really ran the table. You know, it was every single subgroup. Um, we were doing, um, much better than our, the, this, the statewide cohorts. And that was for a grade that traditionally we had struggled to show strong achievement in, in reading. So we had made, um, a number of adjustments to curriculum, and I think those are really starting to pay off. I would say I was, um, very pleasantly surprised with the, the, the performance on, on that third grade group. And that was in, in the context of COVID. Um, I had said this many times before, I'll say it again. One of the schools that had been, um, struggling the greatest to increase its achievement had the highest achievement scores it's ever had, um, in the midst of the, of the, the COVID year. And that, um, that definitely came as a surprise. So I don't think it was a, a matter of setting a goal that was too low. I think it's a matter of a lot of the things that we had put in place to try to make sure that students have high-quality learning experiences are really starting to gel in a very, um, supportive and reinforcing way for our students. Um, and that, you know, and that happened, that happened in, in COVID. Um, I do, you know, wonder what it will be like, um, when we take a look at this year's third graders because they had a very different experience than the third graders before them, right? The, they had interrupted learning in kindergarten or in first and second grade year. Um, these students had interrupted learning in, in older grades. So I, I'm wondering if the impact may be stronger, um, in the third grade coming up. We won't know until we, um, till we take a look at what their assessment results are like. But it, it certainly, to, from my perspective, wasn't a matter of setting a target that was too low. It was having, um, a program in place with, um, staff who were extremely effective with our students, who in spite of all the challenges that they were presented with having to teach remotely and having to teach in hybrid learning and having to teach, you know, we were, you know, it was almost comical how many first days of school we had last year made this happen. Um, so for me, it, it, it's more of a story of an almost miraculous overperformance than, um, setting the bar too low.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, on that note, let's move forward. I, by my calculations, I think we've made it through, right? There's nothing that I've skipped over and missed. Um, I'm going to announce the future, uh, meeting dates. So negotiating Subcommittee, uh, Monday, May sixteenth at five PM, Curriculum Subcommittee, Wednesday, May eighteenth at five PM. Rules and Policy Subcommittee, uh, Monday, May twenty-third, three thirty PM. Curriculum Subcommittee, Wednesday, June eighth at five PM, and School Committee Meeting on Thursday, June ninth at six thirty PM. Um, and next, we are going to go into executive session. Um, and for the public that's here, we will be, um, adjourning out of executive session. We will not be coming back into public open session. Um, someone want to make the motion? Oh, Member Seraphie Cox, there's a long yawn happening. Usually you are, I can count on you to, um.
I'll, I'll read it.
Okay, go for it.
Um, motion to request to enter executive session under Massachusetts General Law Open Meeting, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One, A Three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and litigation and to discuss a level three grievance if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining of the again position of the public body. And the chair said, "Declares."
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Um, and again, we will be, uh, adjourning in executive session. Um, roll call, please, Annie?
I just want to make sure it was Member Davis that seconded it?
Yes.
Uh, okay, Member Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Shaw?
Yes.
Robinson's not with us. Member Gazy?
Yes.
Member Seraphie Cox?
Yes.
Member Stein?
Yes.
Member Levy?
Yes.
Member Miller?
Yes.
Member Goldman?
Yes.
And Member Agna?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to enter executive session. Thank you, everyone who joined us this evening. Um, and and, um, you know who I don't, I don't see Leila John. Are you texting her?
I did text her.
Okay. Um, and who, is someone have the list of who is going to be in this executive session with us?
Um, well, Sarah Churchill.
Recording stopped.
Sarah Churchill Windsor should certainly be here. And Sarah, who, uh, from your team is here for the grievance?
I, I saw Sarah before, but I don't see her now.
Oh, there she is.
She's here, she's waving.
Oh, sorry. Hi.
I don't think she can unmute.
Can I mute? Okay, there you go.
Hi.
Hi.
So you were asking who's going to be here. Um, uh, it, myself, uh, Maria Vega, who is the, uh, chapter coordinator for the clerical unit, um, which is in question this evening. Um, and Andrea Gito is also here as well.
I see Andrea. I don't, I don't see Maria.
Two seconds ago, I just got a notification. It said Maria's phone left, like, right when I was saying who was going to be here. So I believe she just got, um, uh, lost her internet or something for a moment. I'm sure she'll be right back.
Okay. Um, Annie, why can't I put NOM into the waiting room?
We were in the waiting room a second ago.
You know, that was my fault. I, I typed them out, but I don't know why I did that.
But the stream, for some reason, it's not giving me the option. It's really weird. It's not giving me an option to put them in the waiting room.
Well, yeah, it isn't.
Strange?
That is strange.
It's different options than anybody else, and I don't know why.
Uh-huh, yeah, I wonder what that is.
Like, I can't even.
Oh, let me remove the co-host position.
Maybe you can't, you can't.
There we go. Okay.